Just like United States of America. And to the public, the voice of sands, one nation, under God, indivisible, the religion that has us strong. You go. You can't teach them how that's all.
It's Lavi.
Yeah.
Lavi, I need my ex brother-in-law, it's Lavi.
Yeah.
Hello, everyone.
Welcome. Good morning on this beautiful Tuesday morning. We have the agenda confirmation. I had a question for, well, specifically Dave, but the board. We have the human resources didn't, didn't go through with those items, didn't go through committee yet. And I was thinking, at least the salary exempt position discussion should go through committee. And then I know Sheriff Blander would like to be in on that discussion also. So we would like, I would like to table that, you know, going through those channels. But I think having a little discussion now, just to give us all a little background on it, would be good too. And then we can bring it back for decision, how we want to move forward. Because it's pretty, it's pretty complicated, not just that, it affects other things, you know. But then the comp time payout and the allocation for employee benefits, Dave, I think you were familiar with those, and I think there is some time, so should we probably move forward with those?
I think we can, yeah.
So the salary exempt positions will leave on the agenda, but just have a discussion and then bring it back at another date. So we'll leave everything on? Pat, did you see anything else?
No, I was gonna bring that up, but thank you for doing that. That's exactly what we would like to do, yeah.
Any other additions or on the agenda?
To approve.
Motion by John.
Second.
Second by Erica. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Minutes.
Anyone have anything?
Oh, I have one.
I had one thing. Oh, under sheriff, on the deputy position, starting in 24, did we state March 1st? But that was our consensus, I think, was March 1st start date on that? Was that, John, did we say that in the motion, or that was implied, or do you remember?
Yeah, it was probably after the first quarter, and they were about to start advertising and no.
But that was, that was when we discussed, I know we discussed that.
Yeah, it wasn't.
I don't think we discussed that at board.
I know we discussed that at.
I don't remember discussing.
So it's, it wasn't mentioned, it, so, position states starting in 24, but maybe we can express to the sheriffs that that are, we would like it to start it. So we don't want to change the minutes, but the March 1st timeline on the, that deputy position is kind of what we're, we're thinking.
Yeah.
Pat, do you?
I don't disagree, although we did have some discussion, if you, as you remember, Commissioner Okusen and Nelson on the budget related to the sheriff's office and whether there needed to be some flexibility just to kind of meet the budget parameters, but that could certainly be discussed later on.
I think we bring that maybe to sheriff's committee, exactly start date time for that. Sometime in 24. Okay, we can leave that as is, and we'll, we'll get a better start date for, in committee. Anything else?
I had some highlight, but I read it again, so it's good. Hi.
You good?
Yeah, I'm good.
I'll move to approve the minutes.
I'll second.
We have a motion to second to approve minutes. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, most case, thank you, and nice job on the minutes again. Not that usually isn't. Okay. Consent agenda. Does anyone have anything they want to pull from the consent agenda? If not, entertain a motion to approve.
Someone.
Motion by John.
A second.
Erica, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I did have, there was a question on the bond payment. I, I thought it unusual that we have a negative in the bond payment, but Mary explained that that's how the auditors wanted, it's kind of goofy, and that's, that's for the, obviously bond payments for the, for the public works building transit, so. She explained it well to me, I didn't understand it, so. I don't understand the reasoning anymore, just, okay, moving on to open forum. Oh, well, we can certainly hear from the salary, if we're gonna talk about salary study, we're gonna do it, why don't we just do it then, if you have a, well, do you not wanna, if you're, if you're busy later, you, we can certainly hear you now.
Let me send you a text or something.
Okay. Reports and correspondence. One thing, Steve, Steve online, or one thing we were talking about, should we bring that, or should we do that in reports correspondence, about the support to Toad Mountain?
Oh, no, you could do that now if you like, I thought that, that would be the county commissioner discussions.
So I think we're at a point now where we want to give some direction in the, you know, we all went and viewed during the road tour, went and viewed Toad Mountain, and I think you, you're familiar with it.
I'm familiar with it, yep.
And got up on top of that hill, and it's just an amazing sight, just incredible, and viewed the cabins and the lakeshore, and, and all the opportunities, we're worrying, worrying through everyone's head what, what could be possible out there. But I think we have to kind of give some direction now. Are we interested in applying for the, you know, applying for all the grants through, through the company or the organization that wants to move forward with this? And, because there will be some expenses for us at some point, and the expenses will be the, working through to get through a plan of, what's it, a?
Master plan.
A master plan for a park area, and then you want to probably incorporate, and that could, you know, an early, a short study to get the ball rolling would be about eight grand, and upwards toward to a complete plan, if we find out that it's gonna be a goal, then it could be, and then it's gonna be more. So the initial plan to get it rolling would be about 8,000, and then upwards towards, up to $40,000, Steve said, that a complete master plan to get.
What the plan, like the master plan of what we want to do with it?
Yes, and, and that would also probably incorporate other trails, I mean, incorporate more of the county and.
Could even involve the hardwood trails that are going to Wolf Lake, who are having some issues, coming more along 34.
Sure.
I mean, there's just.
And you got the Chippin Lake thing, and you got the other block out there.
Oh, now we're, we're getting an appraisal, is somebody giving us some kind of?
The, that company's getting an appraisal.
That's what I mean.
Yeah, but we're not, we're not paying for the appraisal.
No, but we, they are gonna give us an appraisal.
They're getting an appraisal, yeah.
That's right.
They're getting an appraisal, I mean, that's kind of their end of it, because I think, if the county goes with it or not, I think they're looking at moving forward with some agency. So they're, they're moving forward, and I think it's, I think we just need to kind of have a decision, is this something that we want to go forward with? Now, I think the conditions that we would look at is, the funding would, you know, besides some of the incidentals and ongoing expenses, the funding would come from grants, I mean, that's kind of where I.
Funding to purchase it.
The purchase would be grant monies.
So, so we would do an initial short study for eight, roughly 8,000. We wouldn't do the final study or plan until we know it's gonna be purchased?
Unless, I think, I think you finally, if, once you feel like you're.
The purchase is gonna be.
You know, the, what's the name of the agency again?
Trust something.
The land trust.
Land trust.
Land trust for public use, is it, no, it's not the name, but that's what it is, a land trust for public use. So they would be writing the purchase agreement pending these other, pending these grant opportunities.
So then we would do another plan, what we're gonna use it for after?
I think you would enhance the plan.
That's what I mean, yeah, but you wouldn't, you wouldn't, we wouldn't do that until after a purchase agreement?
No, I think you'd have to do that pri, I think.
Prior, because.
I wonder if you wouldn't need it for the grant.
That's what I was wondering, if you needed for the purchase.
You would have to do that before the grant, and you'd have to, it'd have to be well-written for those, for those. But I think they would have a pretty good idea if it's gonna be, they're not gonna do it if they don't think it's.
Yeah.
A good percentage of success, so. See, we're just talking about Toad Lake Mountain, Toad, what's that? So we're just saying, you know, just.
Can't we just draw a trail through there, 40 grand for that master plan?
I want to get paid to draw it.
It's only, we're that simple, Richard.
Draw a string line.
I don't know, you know, go around that tree and up.
But there's so, there's so many opportunities for that, and, and everyone will have different thoughts on it.
I've, I've heard from several people in the public, and many of them have, have said this could be an opportunity, like what Clearwater County has with their county campground. You know, so I think, I think there's support for it, and I think it's, it is a good opportunity for, I think in the long run, that money will come, come back.
Yeah.
To the county.
Well, you know, you just look at even, even just simple things like a swimming beach, a swimming opportunity there, another, another spot for people to, to go for, because these lakes are getting unaffordable for most people now.
Yep.
And to have a public area where you can, you know, and again, I've, I've stressed in, in some committee meetings, I'd like to have, you know, kayaks and life jackets at different sites for public use, just, these are, you know, put them back when you're done, and kayaks are so inexpensive, and, but this would be another opportunity where non, you know, support a non-motorized, and I, I just, and again, I'm not saying that has to be, you know, it's set up for horseback riding, maybe it'd be a campground for some horseback riders, if we, if we can get more trails in our larger tracks of public land. Be a short trip for some of these people that, that instead of going way out west, they can, hey, let's just spend the weekend over here and.
Or a lot of people go to Maplewood, or, you know, which isn't very far from here, but it's still.
And we asked, you know, how far, you know, we're only about three miles from Chilton Park, and, and a few miles from, I mean, there's other opportunities fairly close, so, but for horseback riding, my concern is, they, I mean, you want larger, larger areas and more, but, so that one spot isn't big enough just to have them come for the weekend, it's just too small, unless you're, but it's a hub for, you know, farther out, so. Anyway, Steve, what do you think, we're, today we're just looking to discuss it and feel the interest of the board, and we can go back to committee and bring something back, or? If we want a letter of, you know, that the, that, we should have a letter stating to that, to them that we are supportive of moving forward with this, and we're willing to, to put together a, a plan on the site.
Yeah. I have the trust for the plan, we gave us a tentative outline, a timeline.
Do you want to hand that out, if you have it?
What this is, is it just a tentative timeline for them to take ownership, and then also for us to go through the grant process to see if we can get some grants to help acquire and perhaps to fund the development of the court, or, who do we want to call it again?
Now, we got, I think we should stress too, that this is not, there is no purchase agreement in place at this time, and there's no, there's, you know, we don't even know for sure if the landowners would be willing, depending upon the appraisal, if they're willing to move forward with it, so.
Sure.
I mean, that'll be the first step, but I think we have to be prepared if it does go to that next step.
Correct. We've talked to them, they're, like, like Commissioner was saying, that, Sheriff was saying that they're in the process now of getting an appraisal, or, or at least trying to come to some idea what the, what the seller might be willing to sell the property for, so we can then, once, and also to get a commitment out of them, that would allow us time to, to go through this process. So there's gonna be some time, we're gonna have to have quite a bit of time to put all this into play, because these grants come together once a year, you can apply, and just the timeframe for this first round of grant funding, if we could have pulled this all together, would have been really, really short, so. This is good, it'll buy us some time, it'll also give some time to get some discussion and, and feedback from the public, and as, as the chair was saying, well then, if they, indeed they desire to.
Nate, did you get one?
Yeah, I got one.
You know, if, if indeed they desire, you know, the desires to move forward, well then, we'll have to figure out how we're gonna put together the purchase price, and probably come up with some sort of a master plan, and how this would fit in with the rest of what the county's doing as far as parks and rec and development of other properties as, as.
And regional designation for a park would be another one?
It would be, well, that'd be one of our milestones that we try to reach, get that designation to help, because that helps with the funding side, so. Any other questions, as far as we're at?
So that says match, 50% match, who matches that?
So the interesting part about the matching is, is that the, the, my understanding is that you can match the federal with the state, and the state with the federal, so, in essence, if you get enough of the grants packaged together, you could probably fund majority of the, or all of the acquisition. As part of some of these grants, they might be looking for some sort of contribution from the public, whether it's from other nonprofits or just straight out donations, but that's down the road, you know, we'd get to that point, if indeed that's what we need to apply for some, or to help qualify for some of these grants. There's still a lot of work to be done.
Yeah, it's, we're, we're very early, but we, I think the, if the board's, you know, not in favor of moving anywhere, then we, then we can step aside and they, they try to, I think they would go to another agency, maybe.
Another public agency?
Yeah, probably try, try and.
Any questions? So at this point, without committing to it, you know, we, we'll get that information from the seller and from the trust for public lands, if they get some stuff, more information on their end, that they're bringing back as a proposal to the county, so we get more of a complete information package, and we'll bring it back to our committee, and ultimately back to the board.
I think, too, we should look at, I mean, if, if the other opportunity is DNR, I think we should examine the pros and cons of county ownership versus DNR ownership, if that. Because we don't, what, what the DNR does with it is unknown, what they would, if they were the owners of it, and I, I think they'd be more limited what they could do with it, actually, because they, they are not as flexible on what, on what, what agency would have it within their department, and then, so.
Usage can be more restricted.
Yeah, I would, I would think so. So I think, I think we should analyze that a little bit ourselves, too, and seeing, you know, if we, maybe, maybe DNR might be a better fit, or, but maybe, I, I wouldn't think so, but I think we should at least talk about it and look at it.
Sure. So, any other questions?
Okay, thank you, Steve.
Sheriff, thanks, Steve.
Okay, we're still into reports, I think you have, someone want to go next?
I can go next. At EDA meeting, we, the RFQ for the housing management was, ended on 10/31, we reviewed the proposals, and we're entering in negotiation contracts. Of course, we are continuing our discussion on housing projects. Also have Western Tole Juvenile Center, we're maintaining the numbers, there was also a shout out to how well James is doing, he's the, runs the secure end of the juvenile center, and he's really deserves a lot of kudos for doing a very good job over there. Also had Mahubi, just a couple notes, as of 10/19, they've had 3,600 applications received for their energy assistance. They are currently in open enrollment for Medicare, which started on 10/15, and goes to 12/17, they've hired three temp staff to help seniors find the best plan, and last year they saved, in Becker County alone, seniors $100,000, so. It's a good place to go if you have any questions about your Medicare plan. That's all I got.
Just one thing, to piggyback on Mahubi, Dancing Sky also helps Mahubi.
Yep.
Do that, yeah.
I had a couple meetings, one of the Prairie Lakes Menace was solid waste, had a very good month, very little downtime on the burners for repairs or updates, and they've gotten some lab reports back from other incinerators dealing with PF testing, and most incinerators, the lab tests show is if they burn at, I think it was like 1,400 degrees and higher, it takes just about all the PFs out, one test was 99.4, and another one is 99.8, so it's probably a good way of handling a lot of it.
What's the acronym, what does acronym stand for?
It's that.
Flur- flur- Fargo, Fargo carbon, I can't remember, the plastics, let's say plastic.
Some type of 3M product.
You know, it's, it's unfortunate that people are still using that plastic, because it's, it wouldn't be that hard to eliminate that from our, our stream, it's, I know, I know there was a company that quit using that years ago, I mean.
There's, I think you're hearing more and more companies are shying away from it.
Yeah.
And trying to.
And what it is, it's not just, it's not plastic, it's the, it's the film on plastic that makes it the wa, the, like, the paper pla, the paper products that have this film on it, like for restaurants is the, is one of the main culprits that use it to, on their sandwich wraps, so that's where the, a lot of these are coming from. So I think it was Schwan's, I think Schwan's, or one of those type of companies just got rid of it and wouldn't use it, but it's, it's lightest, it's cheapest, it's.
That was kind of good, good to hear, that probably be a good way, instead of burying it and stuff and dealing with it.
Burying it would be the worst thing to do.
Probably heard the news, Bond Guards is doing quite an expansion down there, and mainly they're going from about a million and a half gallons to six and a half million gallons a month, so.
Bring a few more cows in.
Yeah. They got production out there, you know, comes from all over, they transport many, many miles.
Yeah, you see more and more jankers from there.
What's that, what's that big farm that's kind of monopolizing the milk industry, is it's not Circle, it's a, it's a, it's a big one, and it's, it's more, a little bit more south, but they're hauling there, and I, I sat with the Commissioner Vega, and there were some concerns about them getting so big that they're monopol, you know, that they're, like, what if they quit hauling to Bomb Guards all of a sudden, say, you know, saying, we want, I mean, there would be.
And then they've expanded, and.
There would be a big, big concern, because there's not enough smaller ones to hit that type of level.
With that expansion, it does create a little issue for incinerator, because right now, all the steam equipment, all that water equipment within Bond Guards is owned by the Prairie Lakes. It's different in, Tuffy's and them, once you get to the building, they own everything inside and take care of it, but what it's gonna do is increase the water discharge that they want Prairie Lakes to handle, while we won't, can use so much of it in the incineration product, so they're gonna have to work with the city and, or discharge it elsewhere.
Septic system, sewer system?
Some is going there already, but we're working through that, and our plant manager down there is on top of it and working well with them, so. Done each from the membership, remains average, I think we still got a few hundred ton surplus, Clay County, and then one other one is, owes a little garbage, but they're trying to equalize that, and that's all from down there. Our next meeting, I think we're having it up at Clay County's new resource recovery site, here, the 15th of the month, so. Head planning and zoning hearing, that's coming up, highway committee, we did the road tour, local research improvement grounds on the agenda, purchase snow pushers on the agenda, and we did review the 2024 budget, Richard was there, and reviewed the five-year capital improvement list, the stuff that they're looking at, that was a big overall county plan, it can be injected into that, so. And they still have a vacant makeup, maintenance worker position, I think they had somebody on board that turned it down, or backed out, so we're still advertising and working on that, so.
And then we did have one of our guys second in the snowplowing this, Chris, how you say his last name?
Not sure.
A Y, A Y E R S, but he was second in the snow, snowplow rodeo, so.
Oh, yeah.
St. Cloud, and I think, I don't know if it's next meeting, it's coming to get recognized, it's been quite a few years, I did have an employee at one time that was first, Larry Trepp, our apostle, but I think along with second, he won a trip to, is it Colorado?
Colorado.
It's pretty much all expense paid, so, out there and they compete, and so, great opportunity.
That's good, there's a lot of guys competing in this.
Oh, there's probably a couple hundred or more at St. Cloud, just. When we send people down there, we want at least three or four to compete and just see what, how their skill sets are, and it's, it's a tough course, I've worked it, I've been there many, many years, and served on that committee, so it's not an easy one, I don't know if any of us could, Richard probably couldn't even pass it.
Well, probably not.
I know, I couldn't.
I could have, when I was younger, when my eyesight was better, maybe.
So that's a great feature, that Chris over there, so.
I always thought farmers should have that, when you get that 120-foot drag, and you're trying to go around, go around piling poles and stuff.
That's all I had.
Yeah, as fast as you can.
Yeah.
I, I had a few of them here, I had a fair board meeting, so, one of the things that they did, they always, every year they give a Becker County Fair Builders Award, and they decided to give it to Keith and Michelle Silenberg and their family this year, so that was pretty cool.
Yeah.
So that's a good one there. They also voted all of their officers in and renewed all of the people that were up for their terms and so, and so forth, so they got all those. Travis Shauer's gonna take over as the, the full, not, he's not, he was the acting president before, but now he's the regular president, so. I had a DAC meeting, we have a new interim director, her name is Sarah Hill, and she's doing a super good job, she's working on some more marketing, she's working on the website, she's doing a bunch of, she's getting a new, we're getting a new camera system, just some, just some updates and some other things, sometimes when you have a, a director there a while, they kind of don't always, yeah, whatever, we'll, we'll get into that, but anyway, there are also, there are also two new positions that were created, we had two employees that kind of got a, a promotion, they're going to be part of the management team, they're going to take over some of the duties of our, of a program director, plus some, some other duties, and in the DAC, like, one of them's gonna be a day service employment manager, and the other one is gonna be a residential service manager, so. There was a, there was a position that, that a person resigned, that left, and they decided to combine those with the program director duties and make them into two positions, so that, that worked out actually pretty well. And then we are also, this week, going to review applications for a business manager also, so. Hopefully, everything works out good, the DAC is starting to come, come alive now, so we're getting pretty excited about that. Yeah, Barry and I had a courthouse meeting, I believe everything is on the agenda, I think, isn't it?
Yeah, we talked about the.
Yeah, go ahead.
About the, oh, now I'm thinking NRM, Toad Mountain.
Yeah. I think everything was on the agenda that, I think everything, if it isn't, oh, and then John and I had a transit meeting, and rider ships are up from la, from September of last year, 5.43%, and then we just got an email, what, about a week ago, that rider ships in October are up 17%. So, yeah, I had to look at it twice just to see if that was right. Was, was it one, not one, yeah, not one, and then we. And then we, we're having trouble getting new buses, of course. So the, here's, here's the issue, the, the issue is last year they del- the, they delivered fifty-two buses and this year so far, fourteen have been delivered new buses. So we ordered buses, I don't know, a couple of years ago, last year I think for this year, two years ago. Now we're, now we're in the P's, Kevin's in the process of filling out another application to, for the new bus in two thousand twenty-five, so we'll see what happens there. One of the big issues is the state requires sixty percent of the parts made in the USA, which I do agree with that, but that's partly why right now that's, the buses are slow in getting them here, so. So what he's going to try to do and other transit people are going to try to do, because they're keeping their buses longer and the, they, the, the budget is, is a, is, there's a set amount they can use for, for a maintenance on buses, they're going to appeal to the state to allow them to increase that amount or the state give them more money for, so they can maintain buses because they're going to have to keep them longer because they can't find any, so. And then one other thing we talked about is having some temporary drivers for some of the transit people during the day. So for example, like at Schultz and Olander and, and the school districts in our coun- in our county, they, they drive in the morning and then they drive in later in the afternoon. So maybe some of them would like to be temp workers driving for transit in between, possible. Yeah.
Reach it out to them.
Reach it out, yeah, yeah.
Spare a couple hours during the day.
Yeah, because that would be nice, because then, then Kevin could, we could decrease some of his overtime and then he doesn't have to be in the bus and he could actually do the job he's hired to do. Yeah. So, anyway, and then Becky's here, Becky Mitchell's here from the Historical Society, we had a meeting, so I'll, I'll let her give all the updates. But, but anyway, if you don't know Becky's daughter, her daughter's in musical.
Let's hold off for just a minute.
Yeah, 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 we're, we're, yeah, we'll finish our reports then. But anyway, I gotta, I gotta give a shout out to her daughter, her daughter's in the musical Guys and Dolls and she did, she's awesome, so. So now everybody in the county knows. And then the last meeting I was, I went with Erica and Barry to the AMC District Four meeting. And one thing that I found out that was interesting.
What?
Was our max, our, our max levy is set at five point nine-two and the average max levy in District Four is six point three. So we are under the average max, max levy set, so. I thought that was good. They, they also talked about a bunch of issues that are going to be brought up in their conference, their yearly conference, AMC conference, and we voted on some of those to see what they have. Anyway, last thing, there are some counties that are putting up green lighting for, in support of veterans in their other courthouses, so.
It's just, it's just a film.
Just a film, yeah.
Or the current lighting.
Just a film over the current lighting, not putting up the green lights, but putting a film over the lighting so that it looks green and, so, I don't know, that's something that we are.
That's in, in support and of Veterans Day?
Veterans Day, correct, yes. That's just Veterans Day. I think that's about all I have.
Go ahead highway with John, he covered that here, covered EDA, NRM with you. We are looking for a forester. We have a forestry position open, I want that position.
Yeah.
But I can't have it, I'm not qualified, but that would.
Doesn't stop you.
Let's just hold off.
You couldn't, you couldn't blame me for saying that.
No, I wouldn't blame you. If it's funny, it's okay. But yeah, so.
Dunton Lock Shelter.
Dunton Lock Shelter.
You know, we're, we're handcuffed where we can be on that, so staff has been meeting with the architect to discuss limitations on the new size and layouts, but still moving forward. I don't know, lots of discussion on that, so.
Yeah, there's lots of little stuff there, but I really wanted to get that forestry position out there because somebody here should have that.
Yeah, that's a good position.
That's a good job.
What do they need, you know, what do they need?
Well, what do you mean?
The experience?
For the, like, what are the requirements?
I think it's either education or experience.
But we're talking about maybe, because we don't have anybody, maybe we can do something, maybe they can get their edu- we want somebody that wants the job.
Yeah, we're looking at, I mean, we, we expressed our, we expressed to, to Stephen, to Mitch that, you know, we can maybe work out, look outside the box how to, how to incorporate this, yeah.
Yeah, because a lot of it is.
If we're not going to get someone.
Yeah. We can't get nobody to, to come and even try.
I think there was a couple that, that good applicants and they offered it and they turned it down. They were, I think they were working for the state, so it wasn't.
Sure.
So if you, if you have love for the forest and being in the forest.
You know, somebody's had some schooling on it and then do more of a job.
Or if they're in the industry already somewhere.
Yeah, if they're in the industry and they know trees and, you know, if they can size these, you know.
They know the difference between a oak and a tamarack, that would help.
Yeah, that would help quite a bit.
We also discussed the fence at, at Buck's Mills might not be installed because of the, of health reasons, but hopefully still, you know, now it's getting nice again, maybe still get it in this fall. Discussed an easement, process of someone getting an easement, utility easement to their Also, we got a couple, we, we're talking about moving the floating dock that was just moved to, to Big Elbow, because there's three docks there, so they were going to maybe move that to, what lake was that?
Well, yeah, it was in Wolf Lake and we were.
Yeah, moving it to Big Elbow.
Big Elbow.
Okay, and other, the other things I think are on the agenda. We had courthouse and the only thing is we are, we're interviewing for the, the assessor and, and we're, we.
The second rounds you want to do are this week, right?
Correct, yeah, we put an email to both commissioners that are in courthouse to see if you'd be available.
My, I had a glitch because I got a new phone and my emails didn't, weren't coming to that new, my new phone, so now I got that fixed, so my, anyway, I'll be more attentive to. Had Lakeland Mental Health also. It's the second month in a row now that we've had a, a negative, we didn't, we didn't meet our budget and so we have some concerns, but it's, it's mostly, we had psychiatry as our big hit, it's always a hard one to break even. We've been in the real negative because we had turnover and that, but, so trying to gain those clients back is, is a process and it's very, it's not a cheap, not a cheap undertaking, so. Just to get people out there to know that the services are available there and, and they're, and I, anyone else have any reports? We had the road tour, it was, it's a good road tour, it was a short one this year, especially when we took time for, for Toad Mountain, so I think hopefully next year we get a, a better experience on the roads and seeing the road improvements needed in the area. We all had, we all were on the conference call with the.
Comprehensive.
Comprehensive plan. I think it was a, a good, good discussion, good, good, you know, I think, you know, I, I think they're good people, I think they'll reach out to the public and, and if anyone knows, any group should, should get, go online and fill out the survey and, and get involved in it as soon as, as much as, and any group that were involved, please spread that word around. Then the other thing, and I mentioned this earlier, but Royal SEP is having a open house Wednesday, November eighth at nine-thirty, everyone's invited, encourage anyone that wants to go support that, they're having some issues with some funding from the, I'm not sure if it's state or federal actually. So anyway, some of their funding has stalled and they want to raise awareness and get that funding, otherwise they'll be struggling to, or they're, even with the funding, they're going to struggle to make ends meet, so. Any other reports, so otherwise we'll move on. Find my agenda and I think we can move right in, right to.
Appointments.
What's that?
Appointments.
Well, I thought we'd go right to the museum and Becky.
Oh, yeah, sure, sure we can do that.
Get out of, so she can move on.
Yes.
Becky, we'll jump to the agenda and.
Number four. Good morning. Patty asked me to come in and talk a little bit about the haunted house, it's also the time of the year, I guess, because we're normally, I come in and do some. Yeah, do some updates on the museum, so I'll start with the haunted house and if you have other questions regarding the museum, we'll go from there. It was overwhelmingly popular. Commissioner Nelson was there on Sunday night, I think that was probably the one thing we maybe didn't anticipate was the, what to do if it is really large crowds and the weather's not very conducive to standing outside. But as with almost any large event, by Sunday night, we did have people moving through there pretty quickly, we'd finessed some different ways to kind of speed up the process, but in the four days, we had over a thousand people through. Some of those, of course, are sponsored ticket, you know, turn-in, so it's not all paid, but by far the highest generating haunted house we've had. Several, several county employees had been in, several, just I think people curious, although I don't know how much of the jail, maybe Commissioner Nelson could share, I, I actually didn't go through it in the dark, so I don't know how much you really saw of the, the physical structure in the dark, but.
You, so you were led into different areas that kind of dead-ended into cells and, and then there was people, you know, it was all dark, of course, so there was people that jump out and, it was a very good scream, scream machine, so.
Yeah.
You got in, into some individual holding areas that were a little bit larger and we actually, and got into the outdoor one upstairs and, you know, the outdoor with the skylight and that was kind of neat because you were, we didn't get too scared up there.
Is now joining.
But it was, it was, it was good, it was fun.
Yeah. We've always kind of.
The line wasn't so fun, but we were in line for over an hour, but, you know, we were inside most of it, so.
We've always kind of advertised, we're probably not the scariest, you know, we want to scare you, but we want to make you laugh too and, and, and in part because people, even though we kind of recommend not to bring little kids, people do bring a lot of little kids and I just don't have the heart to completely traumatize them forever, so, which is why I don't go, by the way, I stand outside because I was traumatized by all that as a kid, but.
It was very, very fun, good community event.
Yeah, so good community event, thanks for letting us put the UFO on the lawn, great, that created quite the stir, which was exactly what we wanted, so thank you for everything. And Sheriff Glender and I have talked a little bit about kind of some of the challenges of all of that and what was, what worked and what didn't, and everybody's asking what about next year and the big answer is I don't know. So, so beyond that, museum-wise, maybe Da Vinci would be a, a little bit of a slow start, definitely very much picking up now. I think in my board report, a week or so ago, I had that there was a little over five hundred people through and I was just looking at the numbers and we've had well over two thousand people through now, so it's definitely like just in that short timeframe, there's some billboards that are going up in Fargo, we're doing some joint marketing with the homes, received some tourism dollar, dollars to help with marketing from further away. And by and large, we are still seeing a stronger presence from people coming in as opposed to just in the region, although the schools are starting to book, have been coming in. So, yeah, all, all in all, it is very busy with Da Vinci as well. Memberships are tremendously up in the new building. Old facility, we would be lucky if we had, you know, two, three hundred members, now we have well over fifteen hundred different types of memberships. And admission-wise, I was just quickly looking to, this year we've seen around thirty-five hundred paid admissions coming into the building, but we've seen over five thousand member admission, which means when you're a member, you get in on that daily thing free. So people are definitely taking advantage of that free daily admission, which is good and bad. It's great that our building's being utilized, it's still going into a new budget year, a struggle with how we're going to, you know, fill those gaps, but, any other questions?
Questions? Thank you, it was a very entertaining.
Thank you, thanks for your support.
Thank you.
Thanks Becky.
Thank you.
Okay, any, we're finished on reports and correspondence, I believe. The appointments for Corbin Lakes Watershed, I think that's by year end, so is it, has it met the, the required notification yet?
Yes, I think we've met those requirements and there's been no individuals that have expressed interest except for the existing individuals whose term expires.
That is year end, correct?
Correct, it is, yep.
Probably next meeting we can, if we haven't heard from any others, I would recommend making appointment then.
Okay.
Okay, county mayor, state or?
Yeah, just a few items, commissioners, you, you did discover you have pointers in your desk, laser pointers. We thought that would be important as we did presentations for you to be able to ask questions and be a little bit more direct on areas on the screen, so we just thought that small expense would be well worth the return and the return be well worth the expense, I should say. Our capital improvement plan, we've got all our data in on the capital improvement plan from departments, we're just waiting on one department and I think the direction from the board was to have an informal meeting once we gather those together and put together a, a review what a county-wide plan might look like, so we are in the process with that. City of Fraser had requested our Cody Piper, our economic development specialist attend, I, he asked me to attend as well, they wanted just to talk a little bit about some of the land that they're attempting to develop and it gave Cody an opportunity to talk about what the EDA's perspective is on the land that the EDA owns in the city of Fraser. And what we thought might be a good idea is they have like a housing subcommittee similar to our EDA, so we thought we might want to get together as subcommittees and talk on how we could help each other in regards to development, whether it's industrial or, or multifamily. So Cody's going to be updating the two committee members, the two commissioners at the EDA Committee as well with the EDA Board. Moving on, NACO Conference, we've registered for the legislative conference, we've registered Commissioner Oaks and I believe you're all registered for the AMC Conference, you'll have your information. Just a heads up, both Carrie Smith and I are also attending the AMC Conference as well. We did communicate with department heads about their interests, if they would like to go down, the board is supportive of them attending their meetings and some may still do that, but they're just looking at their schedules, but we have communicated that. One thing legislatively, we've, we've asked department heads at the last, department head meeting to put together some legislative ideas that are not on the AMC platform, not on the MRC platform, things are really that are specific to our county, the needs we have in our county. And we'll finalize that this week and our plan was to bring you that list on the twenty-first to see if the board would be supportive of that and if so, what we'd like to do is either through teams or in person, bring in our legislators and see are there some items that they'd be willing to author on our behalf. But we thought the department heads could put together some ideas and again, the direction has been things that don't, that, that are not on the AMC or MRC platform, things that are really specific about the county's needs and of course, the board would need to support that as well. I think finally, a few outstanding contracts that were needing to fill the corners been advertised, as you know, that, that it's going to the sheriff's office, sheriff's, I know he's not here, but he'll be reviewing those, I expect through the sheriff's committee on candidates. And then also, we have some CHIPS contracts, that's trial in need of protective services, these are attorney contracts that are expiring. We're reaching out to those existing attorneys to see if they have an interest, but in our procurement policy, we do want to make an effort to put that out there and so we've worked, we're working with the district court just to kind of put a, just a brief advertisement if someone is interested in submitting their credentials. And of course, any of those, both those items will be brought to you as a board for, for approval. And that's everything I just had on my report. I could continue to budget, Commissioner, if you like. Budget twenty-two or twenty-four, that's on page sixteen, we're just finishing a couple final committee reviews. As Commissioner Oakison said, we had a highway committee review, we have human services Wednesday, just about all the committees have weighed in one more time, but we just have a couple of outstanding committees that we'll, we'll be reviewing with. If you, if you look at the dates here, we'll have, our plan is on November twenty-first, the next board meeting is to give you a full summary of each of the departmental budgets, get any final direction from you as a board and then bring a, that, that final preliminary budget to you on December twelfth. As you recall, we have two board meetings on December twelfth and the nineteenth. Getting any more direction, any changes, again, on the twenty-first, we would bring those updates to you on the twelfth. On December fourteenth, we have a TNT hearing, a truth and taxation hearing in the evening here, and then we'll get feedback from the public and then we'll be asking the board on the nineteenth to certify a final budget. And so that's where we're at right now. Commissioner Meyer mentioned where we're sitting at with the preliminary levies, we're very much on the low end in comparison to other counties within our district and of course, that could change, that could go lower, as you know, they just can't go any higher than what we've proposed, so. So that's everything I had on budget. And then if I'll continue, Commissioner, there's page seventeen, there's the pantry grand opening and the request is if staff or commissioners are able to make it and I guess I'd be looking for some direction from the board on who might be able to attend that and certainly I believe we would all make sure we want to have some presence there, so I'd ask the board, is anyone available to attend that, that event? That's scheduled for Wednesday, February fifteenth at one PM.
I have a meeting in Fargo at ten, I don't know that I would be.
I want more, I might be back, if I make it back. I want more, and I might be back, or if I make it back, I'll stop over.
Mm-hmm. It's at 1:00, right?
Yeah, 1:00.
I'll, I'll try to be there.
I have a joint powers meeting up in Fargo.
I don't have a meeting, but I will do my best.
I have to look at my work calendar.
Hopefully, um, hopefully someone, and maybe you can try to coordinate with Commissioners to try to get some, someone to be there and, um, John and I will be running, be on the way back.
Yeah, fine.
From the other end of the.
Plaza meeting goes short, I should be able to hustle back, so.
Period. Thank you.
Usually we have lunch, but, uh, sometimes I get my lunch to go, so. I can, I'm going to stop over there this week sometime anyway and bring my extra squash. All right?
And, uh, we've already done the museum, so we're now at Class and Comp Study. Uh, oh, we had a, some discussion at Finance Committee on what the deliverables, um, we wanted to bring here and we do have, um, our consultant on standby, um, we just, our, um, excuse me, our, uh, Class and Comp Consultant. Um, we did have a meeting with both consultants individually and, um, and that would be Bob Bjorklund with Bannon Grade, he's been our consultant for the many decades on Bannon Grade and we also had a, um, discussion yesterday with, um, Mark Goldberg, who's the Class and Comp Consultant, but it was Mark Goldberg that said he is available the next couple hours if you would like to bring him in and we'll just send him a text if there's an interest in doing that. Um, and that was a request by our Finance Committee to have another meeting with him. Carrie Smith and Amanda sat in on that meeting and we wanted to talk a little bit again with, uh, Mr. Bjorklund, with Bannon Grade about, um, is there a mechanism to, um, look at the foundation of our, the Bannon Grade we have right now and, and, and is there a way to build on that, um, continue with the Bannon Grade? And his, his, um, his encouragement was to really look at a different system, but he did indicate if we are going to look at the, the, the existing Bannon Grade, we are going to need to start, in his mind, from the beginning, uh, and go through that process. Um, but certainly that is available to the Board if they're interested in that. And he did reference that there are just a number of, uh, just things that hadn't been updated over the last decades with Bannon Grade, but it's just an older system and it's a system that just doesn't have the structure that's needed to do, um, do I think what the, what the Board is looking for and getting a, uh, using the existing system. So his recommendation is certainly Bannon Grade is still a viable system. Um, Mark Goldberg has indicated and he gave us a lot of counties, a lot of people are leaving the Bannon Grade for a lot of reasons, but there are still some counties that do use it and, but we would have to look at kind of starting that process, uh, essentially from the beginning. Did you miss anything on that, Carrie?
I think here, we've discussed this for several meetings, I think eventually we're going to have to make a decision, one way or the other. We got to start over, we'll spend another 60, 80 grand. We've already spent 60-plus and we're very close to having it done. There's mechanisms in there to help correct issues that we have, just like the old Bannon Grade system. I'm very familiar with that, I was on board when we initiated that. It wasn't good for everyone.
No, and I don't know where we go if we don't do it, so that's, unless somebody's got an idea on where we go if we don't accept it.
Well, I think there's, there's opportunity to do, to stay, stay with the current system and you don't, it's not like you have to commit forever on it. Um, I think we've been provided information that we can adjust our current Bannon Grade system and get by with it for, for, for a short while or if we, and we want to, I think, um, with every, whatever system you have, you have to continually, um, upgrade it and do a revision every few years or you're going to get behind. And I think that's where we've fallen behind. So I think the opportunity is, is if you, I, I believe you can stay with the same, same system and update it as best as possible, um, and keep, we're, we're going to have to review that every so often. Um, I did reach out to Clay County, they, they also had a, um, review done, they took the information that they were given on their, um, and implemented into their current system. Um, so they adjusted their current system also, um, with new information. I think they review it every five years, so.
I, I met with Mr. Goldberg, um, Dave and I did last week and I, he answered my questions, but I'm, to be honest, I'm still not happy with how, how the study is, I guess you could say. I had asked for further information and, you know, on like the market value of all the positions and I received some of it, but there's 40, 40 positions that we don't, I don't have any information on. So, I mean, his answer is, we can figure the, you know, certain things out through the appeal and I'm just, I think the appeal process is for the employees to appeal. If, if I have issues with certain things, I think that needs to be addressed before and it appears as though that isn't going to happen, so I'm, I guess I'm with Barry, I would rather, um, use the, the data that we have compiled through the study and stay on the same system.
My question on that, I brought it up with Finance yesterday, too. Who is going to take this new information from this study and inject it so we're not completely out of whack on the Bannon Grade system?
Yeah, those two don't go together.
I don't think our staff can do that or else you're going to end up with the old system that gets kind of biased with different employees.
Well, we, we have to pass the state, what's the term that they have? The state pay equity study every year? We've passed it every year so far. I think the new information will guide, can guide us and guide our staff to do that. Um, we have, we have an individual that, that we can contract with on an hourly basis or a, per contact basis if we have questions, but we've, I got to remind you, we've increased our staff at, in HR over this last two years considerably, so the hours are there. If we farm this out, we'll be paying an annual fee to another company also of $21,000 the first year and $28,000 ongoing. So it's not a free doing it the other way. I don't know what, I'm not saying I know the best. Um, I do know that there's questions and something upset me, when Erica asked questions from, from the David Drawn, Drawn, um, she couldn't get the answers, she couldn't get the information and he, he reached, he, she had to have the Board Chair request. Now, there is no difference in any Commissioner, you know, in my mind, if there's a question and anyone wants it, there's no reason to have to go through the Board Chair to get any information that's from, and that, that is a concern of mine. That, I didn't think that was very appropriate. A Board Chair or the full Board request. So I sent an email, said, give, give the information she, she's requesting. How was this, how was that information guarded? So that, it raised a little bit of a red flag for me in that, in that instant and I, and then so he forwarded the information both to Erica and myself. It's a little bit, I'm not, I don't know if I read everything right because there's, there's a lot of information that we weren't provided with and I don't know if Carrie got it and Pat, um, but there's a lot of information that, that has different, where, where the min, mins and maxes are of, and.
And, and that information that we have is missing 40 positions.
So it's, it's a.
Forty position countywide?
Yep.
Countywide that we, uh, he didn't provide information on.
No, and then my question is, does, does he have that information? Is that, or was that not able to be found, market value? I don't know. Or is it a mistake?
It's, it's, there's a, it's a complicated to, to dissect how, how someone interprets all the information and how much, like he, like he said, it's an art. It's an art. So it's.
And I, and if those 40, if you, if you couldn't find market value on 40 positions, what did we pay for then? You know, if that's the case, because I don't think Becker County is unique in that we have 40 positions that only Becker County has, that we can't compare them to other counties.
Did he say he doesn't have it or you just didn't get it?
I asked for it and he didn't, he provided me the, where it shows where Becker County with this study lands at like 104% market value. So I would assume that if that's the, the market value that he's going off of, that saying that this is what makes Becker County competitive, but there aren't 40 positions on there or around 40.
We have to have them, I mean, everybody, all the positions were entered into it, so he's, I'm sure he's got to have them.
Well, he's got the positions, but does he have the market study analysis for those positions?
That's what, that's what I don't know.
No, yeah, I guess I didn't look at every position, I just looked.
And I haven't asked him about it. I, I was.
This was Friday afternoon.
And I was reviewing this late last night.
Did, Commissioner Nelson, did you want him to join at all?
I don't know if there's a question that we have.
Okay, I just wanted to ask.
If we, if we determine there's a question.
Okay.
I would like to hear, make sure we hear from Brian, though.
Uh, did you have something you wanted to talk or mention at this time or?
I'll try to be brief because I know these, this has been going on for a while. First of all, I want to start by thanking this Board. I know that in the max levy, um, this Board has been supportive of an additional position and I just want to recognize that and say thank you for my office. Um, that brings us to the Class and Comp Study. Everyone's seen the chart, it's without debate that the biggest loser in that proposal is my assistant county attorneys, uh, proposing a, basically an indefinite pay freeze or reduction compared to what my staff was told they were capable of making when they were Without my assistant attorneys, I can't do my job. Uh, now we could debate all meeting long about how this was conducted and the results. The bottom line is I don't, I don't agree with what they consider the market for an attorney, a licensed attorney in this area and I don't agree with, uh, proposal to freeze or reduce my staff's pay. I've had one attorney resign, Devin, it's, today's his last day. Um, I can't fault him, he's got an incredible opportunity with the Public Defender's Office, uh, making significantly more, um, significantly more than I'm scheduled to make next year as an assistant. Devin's spot, the courthouse committee supported me advertising immediately, it's been open for 14 days, I've had zero applications, zero. So what does that show? It shows that we are not competitive. Um, I've sent you Cass County, Walker's, uh, information that they've just posted in the last month or two. I've reached out to Attorney Lindstrom, their county attorney, they've had, uh, perhaps one application. So it's a real dark time for county attorneys' offices in rural Minnesota right now. It's kind of a combination of the Public Defenders announcing their, their huge pay increases, but I also know that, uh, you know, six weeks of discussing freezes and, and pay reductions has not helped. So I'm asking this Board, unless there's significant modifications to what's on the table, to reject this and to be open to, uh, offering competitive pay salaries for my assistant attorneys. Thank you.
Thanks, Brian.
Thank you.
If I may, just have a couple of words.
Sure.
I'm not leaving the office for any other reason other than a huge pay increase. This is a great office, Mr. McDonald is a great boss, great attorneys, great staff. The only reason I'm leaving is because $50,000 more a year. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Devin.
That's a, that's significant, no question, but, and obviously, no matter what happens here today, we're probably not going to be, um, close to that, I, or in the, $50,000 is a, is a huge amount of money and, and congratulations on landing that position. So.
I, I don't know what to follow up with that other than, in my, in my work here at Becker County, you know, through, through Human Services, I worked very closely with, with the county attorney's office, um, from the child protection standpoint, not the, the criminal standpoint and we, people and children have the potential of falling through the crack if we don't have, um, enough county attorneys to support the need that we have in Becker County. And it takes a long time to train, you know, for, for county attorneys to, to know and understand and, and become seasoned. So I think we need to support the county attorney, county attorney's office, um, in doing what we can do. I know we cannot compete with the Public Defenders because that's not possible. I know that one thought is to, to potentially look at what we can do next year and maybe holding off on the new position and maybe using some of that to support, um, additional wages for our county attorneys and we could maybe, um, relook at, um, adding a position, whether it's later next year or in 2025, but we can't look at adding another county attorney if.
If it's going to be vacant.
If it's going to be vacant, we can't support the, the county attorney, the assistant county attorneys that we do have, so.
I also am in support of figuring something out because we need to keep our assistant county attorneys, we have to. And we need to take care of them so we can. Obviously, we can't give them $50,000 each, but, but no, that's fine. No, we know that, though, but we know we want to make it, uh, something where they want to be here and stay.
Well, it's kind of getting back to the, the Class and Comp Study. I don't think there's any, I'm not under the illusion that staying with what we have is going to be an answer to our, our issues. I mean, that's, it's not, it's not a, we're, we're struggling in either, either way we go right now and the struggle on the new system is what we have to analyze and say is that, um, is it worth moving to at this time? Uh, now, we can always move to it at a later time, but I, I'm at for the, for this contract year, I think we should, um, stay with where we're at and adjust where we need to in some of the, where we're low and, um, and work to, ask our staff to work to make sure our, our equity is right for, um, our pay equities will pass the test again. That's, that's my, that's my thoughts on it.
One thing we stay at the old system, I think employees are going to have to rewrite all their job descriptions because there's.
They've already written them.
No, they, for the new, new system, it's be a little different format, but we got job descriptions out there that are 30 years old and they, some of those duties are not under them anymore.
That's part of the problem with this new system, though, those job descriptions weren't looked at.
Yeah, they didn't. That's the next phase.
Well, that phase has to be complete so we get this accurate when it's presented and, and adopted. Uh, we can't have those gaps when, before you adopt something and hope to get some, hope to get it fixed after the fact. That's my opinion. If it was fixed before the fact, that's a different story.
And my understanding in talking, in talking to Mr. Goldberg was the job descriptions shouldn't have even been started with employees until after this was approved because then the job descriptions are based off of the PAQ. So I feel like we had our department heads and employees jump ahead of the game in having them do them together. Because, because it's, how do you write a job description if the PAQs haven't been, you know, PAQ gets approved through the wage study. I agree, our job descriptions do need to be updated, um, but I don't know that we need to have this Class and Comp Study to update our job descriptions.
One other, one other thing I have a problem with is when I talk to Mr. Goldberg, too, is, um, he based mainly the grade placement upon the PAQs and he didn't look at the market value wage of that job as part of the, as part of the grading of the job. He, he took, he said he took into account a little bit and then that's why in some of those positions, there, there's a huge discrepancy, like one job's 122% of market value and one job's 90% of market value. I, uh, that's not, to me, that's not wisely using taxpayers' money when we're paying somebody 22% more than the market value. I mean, I don't know.
Is that something we can adjust, Dave?
I think so, but.
Because I've seen that, too, you know, that we were somewhere in, somewhere higher percentage, but I mean, I would think that that could, that wouldn't have, we could adjust that ourselves to, so they were all a very close, you know, instead of 120% or something, that, that's not right either.
I mean, we, we asked that, he said, we as the Board are able to move them around as we can, but then you're messing up the whole scale. I mean, really.
Well, I mean, not if you're going up percentage, you're still on the scale, you're just moving that percentage to be the same for everybody. Because the only thing I say is we were on the Bannon Grade, my gosh, that's a, uh, that's. Because the only thing I say is we were on the abandoned grade. My gosh, that's a, uh, that's a terrible system for, for, at least I thought it was. And, and I don't know where, I guess we're going to go back to that. I mean, there, yeah, that, that's.
And then the other, the other concern, yes, I, I think we can look at that and adjust some of that. The other concern I have is though there's four, there's, what was there, forty jobs he said that are not? They're not, they don't have a market value for? So what do we do with them? I mean, I don't, and we can't just forget about those too, so I don't know.
And we have fourteen grades with two of those grades having elected officials on that shouldn't even be on the, shouldn't even be graded. You know, our, our sheriff and county attorney are on the grade system and Mary's position are all on the grade system. But, so now we have a fourteen grade system with no positions on grade twelve and thirteen.
Yeah, I.
So I mean, there's just, there's way too many things that I just, I don't feel comfortable with, with passing. Ed, and I, to tell you, I did my research and I have combed through the data and I have had conversations with numerous people. And I can tell you that not one person I have talked to other than Mr. Goldberg have said to pass it. So I, there, there, I've done my homework, diligent homework and that's how I feel.
Can we get some of these questions asked of the forty employees that they say are missing?
You know, it's, um, again, we could bring him on right now. That's why I asked Commissioner Nelson. Do you want to get the answers to those questions now or do you want to wait, uh, or are you going to do that in a different format?
Well, I don't know if, if he can say, yes, I have that information, if that's going to make any difference to date for today or not. I mean, is there a question that needs to be answered for you to decide your vote today? And again.
Well, we probably need that for the next meeting and eventually we all agreed to enter into this study and spend eighty-some thousand dollars. And it was brought up that not everybody's going to be completely happy when you have to adjust after the fact. And we all agreed to that. I believe. I don't think there's a descending vote on it.
We agreed to the market study.
And I've been through these before and like I said, back as an employee when the first one was on, I was not happy. And it took years to probably get corrected. Eventually was, but, um.
And, and, and I, I understand what you're saying, John, and I, I am not basing my decision on employees not being happy because I understand that there is that process. But when I have questions that are unable to be answered or aren't answered sufficiently, that's where I can't support it. I'm not, I'm not, not supporting it because employees aren't happy about it. It's my issues with it, that we have some, some positions at a hundred and twenty percent market value and some at ninety percent market value so that we can have a overall one hundred and four percent market value in Becker County. That just, that's where I'm, I'm confused and it doesn't make any sense to me and.
Commissioner Nelson, could I offer?
Please.
So I think staff wants the board to make an informed decision. So if there's missing information, you need to get, we need to get that to you. And I think I'm hearing something from Commissioner Jepson that we need to get the answers for. We can do it in this format or we can find an alternative format. I think we've made the effort, um, to make sure that individually you could reach out to the consultant, which I think many of you have. And so I, I think if, if there's more information to, to let you, to get that to you or we'll work with the consultant, make sure you get that. I will tell you, when you look at the proposal that the board approved, you are at the, you are at the wage table step, you know? You're at the step to approve a wage table. Uh, the job description, um, review and approval takes place after the wage table was approved. I've been copied on a number of emails that, um, that Carrie put out to the employees. And I'm convinced without a doubt, um, the clear direction, the message was to focus on these PAQs. If you have a choice between doing, getting the PAQs done and job descriptions, focus on the PAQs because the PAQs are the foundation for a future job description step that would take place after the wage table is approved. I think the one thing when we talk about the existing band and grade system is, and I know, I know the boards acknowledge this already, but, it, it, I think you guys brought this on board in the mid eighties. Uh, again, this is, not that I've done the research. I got that from the consultant, you know, who's involved in it. And, um, and in, in that time, and he was there pretty much every step of the way. As Commissioner Nelson said, you know, tables need to be updated, you know, in a scheduled number of years. Usually it's every three to five years. We're not seeing any documentation that these tables were ever updated. And of course, job descriptions should be updated every three years, uh, during that time and, and they have never been updated. So I think we all agree that we need to get to a better place, um, on a table and a job description and a set of protocols that maybe hadn't been done in the past. You know, our consultant with band and grade, and I call him our consultant because you haven't left band and grade. We're still in band and grade, um, because you haven't made any direction otherwise. He clearly is, is recommending a, a change for this county to consider and to go away from band and grade. But I, I do feel that it might be important for maybe, uh, maybe in a future call with this consultant that maybe one or two of your commissioners should sit in on that so you can hear that directly from him. He's not giving us really a whole lot of options of using our existing system or going, or staying with the system. He's encouraging you to go beyond that to this system that you have approved or, or, or to move forward with only because you've made such an investment in it. You're really at the point where you're coming to the tail end of it. And I think the final thing I would just like to say is, I think there are a lot of questions about the review process if somebody does appeal. And I think we should talk through that as well. And, um, because the appeal process right now, as we have it scheduled is, um, appeals in the, in the new system. Appeals would go to the HR director and then directly to, uh, the consultant. And certainly that is up to the board and, uh, but certainly you don't have to have that discussion if you don't want to consider the table at all. But right now, I, I guess what I'm just looking for is how can we help you make the informed decision that I know you want to make as a board? And, uh, what information do you have that you need that we can get to you so you can give us some direction? Thank you, Commissioner.
We need to know if, where the rest, if there is X more data on market value wages, we need to know where it is and why we don't have it or why we, and then if there isn't, we need to know why there isn't. Because I don't think we can, and I don't think we can, can make an informed decision unless we have all the information. And then we also need to know how to, my understanding is the grades were, were mainly produced by the PAQs. I think I said that before. We need to know how we can make those grades different if we need to, to match the market value wage. Because there are lots of jobs that don't match. There are lots of grades that people are in or positions are in that don't match the market value compensation of that grade, of that position. Does that make sense?
I, I just.
Some of them, like I said, some of them are way up here, some of them are way down here. Why can't we be here? We're close. I know some people aren't going to have the same, you know, like, like you said, like Erica said, we're not, I'm not do, I'm not concerned about the employees if they're happy or not. I'm concerned about, are we using taxpayer money wisely to get this correct? And we, and we can't, we can't vote on this until I feel it's right. And, and, because it's, I, to me right now, it, it doesn't seem like it's equitable, fair or correct.
What I'd like, you know, Erica and David probably got in there bury the market study on each of the positions, how they, I've never seen that, so.
Yeah. I seen some of them.
It should be sent to the full board if one or two get it.
I did tell them to send it to the whole board.
Did, did the board receive an email? Okay, well, let's confirm that.
Well, I, I, I question why, why, if, that's what I said. If, I said, send, I, my reply to send, if anyone wants any information, send it to them. I mean, why would you withhold any of that information from a, a board member?
You should send it to the complete board if you're sending something.
I would agree. It should never go to one, it should go to all. So I agree.
Well, I can rewrite, reread my email or my message back to him. Send it to anyone who wants any information. And I, when Erica asked me or told me about it, I said, send it to everyone. Why would you hesitate if someone's asking information?
I said, can you send it to the whole board? If that's what he needs, send it to the whole board.
And he wouldn't. He wouldn't until I put a request in as a board chair. And it just strikes me as odd. If a commissioner asks for information and at least send it to you so you can disseminate, disseminate it.
I will follow up.
And that just doesn't seem like a good practice. I mean, we, so I think, and I just Googling, there's, band and grade is, I think, used by the federal government today. So it's, it's not an obsolete, we are, we are back because we haven't updated it. It's, it's a system that's usable.
I'd agree.
Very outdated.
Yeah.
It, it, it's. Let's be more specific. Our band and grade is outdated.
Our band and grade is outdated.
And I think with this information, we can analyze it and see where we can. And then we will have to probably monitor if we stay or go with whatever system we want. But I think we went into the class and comp study not fully understanding all of our options. And I think we're, we're, this is a process to get us better informed and, and maybe employees better informed on what this, what everything means. We are in a market today where employees are too valuable not to be listened to when there's, when there's issues like this. And I think if you just went ahead and, and adopted it with so much questions, I think we would be doing a disservice. That's, that's my opinion. So I, I cannot move forward at this time. Pat's asking what we need and, and I don't know if I, if there's any information that would change my mind to move to this at this time. Now, at some point, this might be a system where we review. And I know a lot of counties use it and, and value it very much. So I'm not saying it's a bad system. I'm saying in my interpretation, the data was, the data that he's used might not be as complete as what I would have liked him to use it. Like, the attorneys are an example. I mean, there are just some cases. And I also question, you know, our HR, what our HR's role specific compared to what the, what the data he collected. Clay County's is more of an assistant, H, assistant administrator. That's the role of their current person. That's not the role of our HR director at this time. So we're moving, and, and how do you appeal a position that's, you feel is too high? I mean, no, no, I'm not saying it, I'm not saying it is or isn't, but, um, how do you appeal those positions where you think they're, they're, they shouldn't be at that pay grade? And you, and we don't have that authority after the fact. You know, I think we can't have someone at a higher scale and then reduce them. I mean, that would be, that's, that's not appropriate in my opinion, so. Anyway, wish the Lord, again, neither sys, I mean, there's, there's issues in band and grade, no question about it. And we'll, we'll have, we'll have a lot of imp work and we'll have expenses. Uh, if, if we move forward with the current one, we will have another twenty, twenty-some thousand initially and.
If we up, keep updating, it'll be twenty-eight, I think.
So. If there's more information that you want to review at our next meeting, I am open to whatever the board wants. I, it's, whatever direction we go is up to the board.
If you're where you are and you're not going to move, but if they want more information, then, then they should certainly get it in.
I mean, I, I would love the information on the, you know, around forty positions that we don't have the market value for. However, I'm not sure that that information is going to change my mind where I stand right now without, without rearranging the, what we have. I, I mean, I don't, I don't know what, what I would be approving. I guess that's like that's, if I'm approving what is on the, the grade that he has given now, no, I, I won't, will not approve that.
Okay, so at this point, without making the, without making any motion to move forward with this system, we are not, we are sticking with band and grade until this board brings it back to move forward. That can be done. Any commissioner wants it, you're welcome to put it on next agenda. I don't have any problem with any more discussion. But unless that happens, unless this board, Pat, you can bring it back if you think the votes are there. That's fine with me.
Well, I'm just.
I'm just saying that with no action today, we are staying with band and grade until this gets approved.
Oh, I think by default, Commissioner Nelson, if you don't make a change, you are in band and grade. Yeah, yeah. But, but I just wanted you to know, I, I've continued to bring it because that's, I, I hope you appreciate why I continue to bring it. I'm looking, looking for direction.
We need to continue to have that conversation.
Right.
We need to keep talking, yeah.
And I just want to, could I offer just a couple other items, Commissioner Nelson?
Yeah.
Yeah, um, the, uh, I just want to make sure everyone knows as well, the, our, the way our budgets are, are developed um, is based on implementing the, the wage table. And that would include a, you know, an increase along with a, um, an anniversary step increase. That's part of our county policy. So if we do go a different way, you know, one of the, the, the role that we need the board to play is help us understand that budget item and how we can redirect it outside of doing a, implementing the, the band and grade wage table system. So we'll need some help on that. And I, I just also want to remind the board that.
Well, just to be, let's just be clear.
Please, yeah.
That, that discussion then about, you're talking about negotiations would be in closed session about, about. I'm talking about, you have a dollar amount implemented for that already.
I was just talking about budgets in, in its entirety, not in negotiations, but go ahead.
But what it leads to is negotiations and those discussions would be in closed session.
Absolutely, yeah, yeah. I, I just wanted to just mention that the budget that you have been looking at so far, this is what, what's in it right now. I just, that's all I wanted to say, so, yeah. Then I'll leave it at that. Thank you, sir.
Okay. Is there any more comments or, I mean, I mean, I'm not saying you can't make a motion if you want to. I'm.
Well, if they're still, there wouldn't be no sense in doing that if they're, if they still want more information.
You're available to do it. You're right.
Yeah.
Well, Commissioner Nelson, what we'll do is we're going to compare our notes. We'll probably watch the recording again. Just make sure we've heard all the questions. And I think our, our goal is going to get a response to you here this week. So you can have that information that you.
No, I'd like to have additional information.
Thank you, Commissioner.
You know, and if there's any, any information that he has that, that can share with us just to show, and, and maybe he has, I mean, maybe there's things that we can say, you know, did you take this into account on, on, um, it might, it might be helpful. So I know we don't want to be flooded with information, but we, we are available, we can sift through what we, what we review anyway.
I would appreciate whatever information he.
Whatever, yeah, whatever he can supply us.
And if he forward it to one, forward it to all.
I just feel we don't have enough. And one thing I want to say too, I, I, I hope I didn't sound like, when I said I didn't, wasn't concerned about employees being upset. That's not, I didn't mean it in the way that I don't like employees. I hope everybody understands that. I just, I, I, I wanted to also say that it's very, it, it concerns me that we are treating our employees and our taxpayers correctly, fairly and adequately. That's, that's what I wanted to try to say, so.
Okay.
Please don't think I just don't like employees.
Thank you. You know, I, this was good discussion regardless which way this goes. I think this is, we're moving in, in a good dialogue area. So with that being said, we'll move on to auditor treasure.
Is now exiting.
I wish they could find a way to not tell us who's, when there's people entering and exiting.
Yes.
There should be a mode for that.
I think if you turn the volume way down, right, we wouldn't.
So.
Not have on.
I have some.
Are you making a joke or are you serious?
Oh, I got, I don't know what's going on here.
I got some lead. Want some lead?
No.
Okay, we.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, we have two items today. First is a capital expense request for casework software.
Yes, um, today we were, um, we are requesting your consideration to purchase Ace Caseworks accounting software for the county. Currently, um, human services, I believe since 2020, has been utilizing Ace Caseworks and digitized all their, um, purchase orders, invoices, service level agreements and such, and have had great success with it. Um, back in 2021, we did come, um, to the board for a total ERP system to replace our current accounting software, which was IFS. They did approve that, but it was later decided we were going to hold off moving forward at that time. So we have stayed with purchase, paper purchase orders and invoices, and it's a very manual process for the remaining part. And it's a very manual process for the remaining part of the county besides Human Services. So, basically, when invoice comes, we give it to the department head. And then at some point, that comes back to accounts payable. What this would do is streamline that. We would receive it, we would scan it through the software. It'd be routed directly to the, to the approver and the coder of that invoice. And it would just really help in paying past due invoices. We've had a few findings in the past few audits on that because it can get lost in someone's desk, so on and so forth.
Nicole, how is this, now, now, highway and inputs there is digitally already, so this highway would not be included?
They really don't input, highway wouldn't be included into this simply because they have cost accounting. Their system is completely different and it is currently not compatible with this Ace Caseworks. So, it would be every single department except for highway. And they don't really digitize. All they do is scan their purchase orders and invoices.
So, is this something?
Where this is in an actual software program.
Is this something that will move to highway eventually or is that system?
We would like to. We would like to start with the remaining funds first and then hopefully work with Ace Caseworks to, to do that because I think it'd be good. One big benefit to this too is, you know, right now, let's say I fill out a purchase order and I have an invoice. I typically walk to the approver, whether that's down here, whether that's, you know, in our office. This is right to the approver. They sign their name. It's on to the next person. It's just time. It's 2023, almost 2024. It's time for us to get, you know, kind of on board with that. We have a lot of, we pull a lot of invoices for our audit. We probably put eight to 10 hours in every audit. You know, like I told the courthouse committee and finance committee, it's typically me on my hands and knees trying to.
So, this would, you feel this would reduce just in audit times, eight to 10 hours of research and?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. I mean, it's a click of a button then.
Jessica gave an example of, of just recently, there was an invoice they were looking for and they had to track it down physically because it was, it's filed, it's not electronic.
Yeah, we had moved it to our JL storage.
So, it, and then you have to get different people to give you access to that.
Yeah, it was, it was a two, three day process to get one invoice.
And now you can search it?
With the new program?
Yeah.
You can just search it. Yeah. And what's nice is each department can search their own. They don't have to contact our office and then wait for us to get it for them. You can, it's trackable. So, like, I can look in there and say, okay, Steve has opened it, you know, and he hasn't approved it yet. So, it's just much more.
Steve, get on it, please.
And also, we're in a work from home time. Had Human Services not started this, you know, right around the pandemic time, it would have been very challenging.
Absolutely.
So, that's a huge benefit. Clay County hosts about twenty different counties for Ace Caseworks. We did contact them and they're willing to waive the thirty-five hundred, thirty-five hundred dollar startup fee since Human Services is already there. Our cost, we were told our cost would be lower because we already have the infrastructure in place.
The other, the other big part of this too is, you know, this was a couple, couple of years ago, two, two and a half years ago, we, we've, we authorized a new system that we didn't move forward with. Now, did we get a new resolution to?
Yeah, we were going to talk about that. I thought you might bring it up. We, we were working on a resolution. I talked to Mary this morning about, we thought we'd just take it through the committee into the board here on the 20th.
So, we, so this is in place of that system. And at that time, that was a huge over, I mean, it was, it was more, is much more complicated than just this. But this was part of that. And so, we're not spending that money. And what we said was we should rescind that, we should rescind that authorization to do that because that was about six hundred thousand for the whole thing.
I did bullet berry and it was about, it was roughly four hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars that was approved. And I spoke to Pat and Mary and we'll work on rescinding that. This was kind of like the bare minimum that I wanted to see happen is to get us digital. You know, spaces of, of a premium upstairs and it's just time to move into the world that everyone else is living in. So, I think it would just make life.
I think in the past one was, was early stages of the first monies coming in from pandemic. Yeah, it was the cares money at that time. And there was restrictions on how you could spend it and when, and the timeline you had to spend it by. And those changed in the meantime, so we pulled that, pulled the reins back on that and did not move forward with that. And I think the company that had that has had some issues. So, we're probably much better served moving forward in this, in this simpler version of what we want to move forward than.
Absolutely. I actually even had county, a couple of counties reach out to me when they, I don't know how they heard through the grapevine, but that we are going to be approving that company, Tyler Technologies, just a couple nights before the board meeting. And they said, Nicole, wait.
So, anyway, this, that four hundred and forty-six was much more extensive than just, just this.
Absolutely.
So, it's not just one, one, but it is, is much, it's, it's probably a better, better way to move forward with this.
Here, I'd make a motion to approve the purchase of the casework software for fifty-four thousand seven twenty-one.
I will second.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Nicole. And thank Jessica too.
The next item we have is a three-year, our audit is complete for 2022. We're requesting to enter into a three-year professional service agreement with Clifton Larson Allen. They're the company we've been doing business since I took office. Basically, every year, there will be a scope of work presented to the board. Those are usually done in December to be signed by the administrator and the county board chair for audit services. These are required. The, they have presented us with a three-year quote. That was in the packet. Are there any questions?
You didn't, you weren't auditor when Hoffman was here?
No, I was deputy auditor.
Yeah, I knew, I knew it, that you were out there. Okay. CLA has done a nice job for us. Tanya has, has expressed and I think Nicole has said how good they were to work with and how, how beneficial that they were to helping us in, in learning our roles too. So, recommend to move forward.
Move approval of the CLA.
Okay, we have a motion.
Your contract?
Second.
And a second. Is that for both EDA and the county?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay. Is that both EDA and the county? Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Good morning. I have three items. One for informational purposes, the first one, which I'll just talk briefly about. And there were, I think the chair already mentioned that this will be brought back through committee. The salary exempt positions, I did include some information in your packet just so you had some background information about how positions are evaluated. And really, the purpose in bringing this forward is to get some direction from the board. We do have some positions that are classified as salary exempt and others that are not. Keep in mind that, or that would qualify for those exemptions, I should say. But keep in, keep in mind that there's no requirement that you have to move hourly employees or their positions to exempt status. Probably my biggest concern with this is that I'm not seeing consistency from department to department. And so, in, throughout time, I'm not sure how things were decided. And in structurally, when we're, when I'm looking at this, some of the, just an example of a few of the issues that I see is you have potentially somebody supervising another position. And the, the position that's being supervised is an exempt status position. The one up above it is hourly. So, that's just an example of some structural issues. Another department, similar positions, one's exempt status isn't eligible for overtime and the other is. So, again, it really, I just think we need to take a look at positions and whatever the board's direction is with regards, and, and some counties are moving towards having less of those exempt positions and, and moving towards hourly. And again, that's fine. You, you can do that. There's no, nothing that says you have to move positions to exempt status. But again, my concern is more of the inconsistency and the board direction of what you would like to see occur across the county.
Is the, is the, does the employee have, I mean, what if the employee had, had a preference? I mean, say they had two employees, similar jobs and one, I mean, is it allowable to give the employee the option?
I don't know that you'd want to go down that and allow one to accumulate overtime and not the other.
But if both have the option to do either one they want, I, I.
I guess.
You know, this is the first, first kind of discussion of this. And I just showing that out there to, just because, you know, if, if one employee wants this and one employee wants that, what, is there, is there a negative for the county to, to let them? And if they want, I mean, I don't know. I'm just, it's something that we just.
It should be consistent with.
That, that's really where I'm trying to get to.
That employee now would, I was going to say salary. Well, that person leaves, the next one coming in, then you got.
That, that's where some of the structural issues, I think, can come in as you.
So, I, I'm playing devil's advocate, so what's the harm?
Well, I think.
Erica, I think we got to keep them all the same one way or the other.
Yeah.
Well, again, devil's advocate, why? If, if one wants salary, one wants, I mean, I'm just, if they're equal.
So, what you're saying is?
I'm not saying we should have done. I'm just saying, what's the harm?
I just want, I just want to make sure I understand what you're saying. Let's say the highway department, if one is salary and one is, they, they have the option of being salary or exempt. Well, you're going to have the salary person always taking the overtime and the exempt person's just going to do the forty and then we're going to be paying way more in overtime and.
I don't, I don't, I don't feel that would happen at all. I think our, our employees would, I think our employees would, I mean, what you're describing is two different jobs. They're, because they have, they have different duties. There's no one in the highway that would have the same duties that, I don't think.
Oh, that's what I thought you were talking about, like, having the same duty people have, the employee has, one employee has the option to be exempted or one employee has the option to be an hourly.
Well, I was thinking kind of, one over, I, I, I'm just thinking outside the box, just thinking what would be the harm if, but it's just something for us to, you think about. It's not something we have to decide right now, but it's just.
Then, then the other thing we have to think about if we do make some changes, we also have to look at our personnel policy because there are different things for non-exempt and exempt people in our personnel policy too that would affect.
Well, there's only a handful that would, that we're talking about.
No, I know, but I'm just saying, like, like, like what happened to us with the.
Vacation.
Vacation day, we didn't realize that some of those people, those hourly people were on that scale. And so, we need to make sure we don't do that again.
So.
What you're saying, Carrie, is that there, there are positions where supervising and.
Yes.
Under that you're like, eh, I don't think this is.
Yes, yes. I mean, a, a great example of this is the new lieutenant position. Again, it's a new position. It certainly meets the, the threshold for an exempt position. The one that supervises it above is an hourly position. So, again, and when you talk about different people, I just wanted to make sure, I'm not sure I understood the question, but positions, like, if you have everybody in a certain position class, they all need to be the same.
Yeah.
You can't pick and choose. So, okay, just so we're all on the same page. But again, it's for informational purposes and I believe what the suggestion was is that I bring a list of employees through committee of who's at an exempt status currently, structurally, and who is hourly. And, and I would say that, while I know we have many more hourly positions than we do salary, generally. Department heads are, well, not generally, I believe they're all exempt status. And we have some supervisors, you know, some physicians such as, you know, super, social workers, for instance, I believe are exempt status.
Yep.
So, again, just really looking for how, how do we want this to look? And again, the, the trouble, if you will, by the Department of Labor isn't going to come if you choose to have more positions hourly. Where it's, would come into play is if you had somebody at an exempt status and we're not paying them overtime when they were entitled to it. So, any other questions with regards to that?
Well, I'm wondering if, if there's positions we're considering on changing, do we want to get employee input or department head input? Maybe not employee input, but at least.
I, I think you can, again, you can do it, you know, however you would like. What, with whatever information. That's really, again, for point of discussion, you know, what, how, how should we look at this? And what's, what's the most effective and efficient way to look at everything?
And maybe after we get that list, maybe we can take it to the prospective committees and have a conversation.
Yeah, and if you'd like, I could certainly get the list of who is at that status currently and, you know, maybe which positions potentially could go to the exempt status and that way you'd have all the information. So.
Yeah, I think that sounds like a good time.
Okay. All right. My next item in your board packet, this has, has come up a few times in our personnel policy. There really wasn't good language for compensatory time payout. And in speaking with payroll, for at least, I believe it's the highway department, was allowing employees just to cash out as they would like. And they had a form that I just basically modified to fit across county. And again, in speaking with payroll, it doesn't appear that it would be an issue just to allow employees when they would like to cash out comp time and not putting parameters or timelines on that. So, I would request that there be a motion that that's accepted within, the modification within the personnel policy.
And the modification is just what's in red?
It's on the red.
Yeah, it's in red, yeah.
Yep.
So, pretty much they just be able to get it when they want.
You need, need a motion on that or?
Yes.
I'll make, make a motion to make the change in comp time payout.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to, to add the paragraph, employees will have the ability to request a payout of any and all earned compensatory hours at any time. A universal form will be utilized to request payment of the, of the requested comprehensive time and will be submitted to human resources.
Okay.
That was the change. The only change. Any other questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, motion carried.
So, the last item that I have is, I just wanted to ensure that everybody was educated and we're all on the same page with how, as we've opened up, open enrollment for benefits of how we are calculating payment allocation for each employee and the cash and lieu. Through the benefits committee, we had some discussion with regards to this. But again, I just wanted to ensure that the board was in the know and that everybody was on board with how we had calculated this. So, how I have it, I just did some comparisons just for the reference. So, how it is calculated currently is the starting point of that fourteen oh six at the top and then deducting the paid for benefits for each employee. Then you come up with the net amount there and then utilizing the premium paid on behalf of all, you know, full-time employees, the lowest cost premium, which then has a, an effect on your cash and lieu and increases it, sorry, I don't have my glasses on, roughly a hundred and sixty-some dollars each month.
So, I think this is a, a great, a great opportunity for those that don't utilize family insurance or the higher, higher products. I mean, if you're utilizing the minimum, you will have an increase next year of one sixty-eight sixteen monthly. So, of course, your, our regular insurance went up, but this was a low, lower cost ones that, that we've been able to utilize. So, what is the blue, the blue number thirty-four eighty-one? What is?
What that, again, I just, for reference, what I did was just the difference, this came up through some comments that last year we were using the lowest premium plan, the HSA, and that was the cost of it. And then the most comparable plan to the same one that was with the same deductibles, that's the cost. So, that's more of the, so I would just.
Okay, so somebody wanted to know, I'm taking this plan, what's the change? I mean, okay, so.
I just gave it for reference.
Okay, so the, the blue number is just comparing a, two, two different plans.
From twenty-three to twenty-four.
Okay.
And the cost difference.
So, okay. Okay, so there was an increase in some, there was an increase in some of these, as we know. But to the benefit, to benefit those not utilizing other, the higher dollar ones, there's a cash, a significant cash benefit, so.
Do you need a motion for us to approve this?
I do.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Sorry.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, and that is to approve the, the formula for the insurance benefits, cash and lieu for pay. For, for the.
Twenty twenty-four.
Twenty twenty-four pay period. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Carrie. Do you need a break?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. So, well, Shane's is just a grant acceptance. Yours is just a grant. It's one, it's, it's no, it won't take us thirty seconds.
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve? Is there a second?
I did want to comment on something.
I did want to comment on something too, if, if I can, so.
Oh, we have a lifesaver award, that's right. Are you gonna do that today?
Do you want to wait? Do you want to take a break?
Are you gonna do a lifesaver award?
I was just gonna discuss it. We don't have people to present to.
Okay, yeah, we'll take a break.
Take a break.
Yeah, you're good.
Take, take five minutes.
Five.
Um, that dollar amount is for thirty-one thousand six hundred and twenty-six dollars. Uh, it's a fifty-fifty match grant, so we'd be looking for approval on that.
Okay, entertain a motion to approve one E.
Move one E.
Motion by John.
Second.
Second by Richard. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries.
And one note on that, uh, we'll be coming with the twenty-twenty-three in a little bit, but twenty-twenty-two was a little high because of some COVID funds and some other funding that's available through the emergency managers. Uh, we anticipate twenty-twenty-three will get back down to the quote-unquote "normal" uh, funding. Um, the other one is just, uh, recognizing something that occurred in the jail. Um, we had, uh, um, an award given from, uh, ACH, um, or on behalf of ACH to a couple of correctional officers. Um, if I can, I'm just gonna read the, uh, the story and the award, uh, that they presented to, uh, three of our staff. It says, "On December twenty-second, twenty-twenty-three, in the Becker County Jail..."
Twenty-two?
I've, uh...
Oh, September?
September twenty-second of twenty-twenty-three. Uh, yes, in the Becker County Jail, Correctional Officer McDougal, uh, alerted Sergeant Sean Omen of an unresponsive patient. Arriving at the scene in the jail, Sergeant Omen noted that the patient had been slumped over in a chair, face turning gray and blue. Correctional Officer McDougal called nine-one-one and retrieved Narcan as Correctional Officer Jessica Ross arrived on scene also. Through the, uh, though the patient had a pulse, the patient was not breathing. Sergeant Omen administered two doses of Narcan and sternum and sternum rubs, which had no effect. Multiple doses of Narcan were given to the patient before the patient took a deep breath but was still unconscious. Sergeant Omen and Correctional Officer Ross moved the patient to the floor and administered breathe breathing using a bag-valved mask. The patient eventually regained consciousness. EMS arrived soon after and the patient was transported to a local hospital for further care. It says, "On behalf, behalf of Advanced Correctional Healthcare, or ACH, we are honored to present ACH Overdose Revival Award to Sergeant Omen, Correctional Officer McDougal, and Correctional Officer Ross for their heroic actions. As lifesavers, you have shown dedication, commitment, and integrity." Uh, so we, they received that award, uh, I believe it was about two weeks ago in the jail. Um, and the picture up there is them receiving that award for ACH.
Thank you, Shane, for bringing that forward. I, I, I read that earlier. I can't remember if that was a email or a Facebook post, but, um, was it?
It probably was.
But, uh, congratulations and a, and a huge thank you to the staff out there for, I mean, it's a, it's a difficult job and, and, uh, when you hear, hear the success stories or the, the, the attention to detail of their work, uh, I think it's a, it's an asset to say what great employees we have out there. And again, with our, of our new jail, it probably also is easy to say that with our new jail and the, and the how it, how it's more accessible. I mean, if you're at the haunted house, you certainly know that it's not very accessible up in the old jail. But, um, how, how you can maneuver and, and find those issues so much easier now with all the technology and, and monitoring that we have. So, thank you and thank those people and, uh, congratulate them on, on saving a life and hopefully that, that, um, person can come and, and, uh, the, the person that was saved can, can come back and be thankful for, for, for those people that saved him or her, so.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Shane.
Have a good day.
Okay, um, highway. I think we can get through highway before we move to planning and zoning.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners.
Morning, Jim.
Um, couple action items for your consideration today. Uh, the first one, uh, we're seeking adoption of a resolution, um, of support and, um, a commitment to an application from the Local Road Improvement Program. We are seeking, uh, to get funding for our project on Westlake Drive, uh, which is scheduled to come up in twenty-twenty-five or twenty-six, where the amount is capped at one-point-five million and we're likely asked for that full amount. Uh, the project will be similar to like the phase that was completed this summer. It will include a trail along, uh, Westlake Drive, uh, reconstruction of the road, uh, some narrowing, um, and changes there of the road. Um, currently, we do have some funding in place for that project. We have, uh, the city has secured, uh, about nine-hundred-thousand for the trail, and we have approximately six-hundred-sixty thousand, uh, of federal funds on the roadway. Um, so the balance of what is remaining, we can hopefully gets partial funding with this local road improvement grant. We have been successful in the past, uh, on South Washington and also, um, with the, um, um, the Highland Drive Project with the Detroit Township. So, we're, we're hoping we'll be successful again on this, so.
And we don't have ISMT issues on this portion, so thank, thank goodness.
Nope, not like, not like the last project, yeah.
I'd move, uh, Resolution one D. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Next item for consideration, uh, we have a purchase request. Um, we're looking to buy a fourteen-foot snow pusher to assist in our snow clearing, uh, both at our new public works facility, uh, use in the, in the, the field as well, and it could also be used to aid and assist in clearing over at the, uh, the jail site, too. We received two quotes, uh, and we're recommending, uh, approval to Swanson, the low quote, in the amount of eighteen thousand, uh, nine dollars.
Move the capital purchase request for Swanson's for the snow pusher, eighteen thousand zero-zero-nine. Second.
We have a motion, a second. I did note that, um, I'm sure, and I, John clarified, that the, the cheaper quote for one of the items was a smaller unit, correct, from, from the RDO quote? Jonah's nodding, so.
Yeah.
Assuming so, that's why the, so I'm, I'm good with going with the bigger one that, that you want, so. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Finally, um, like to, uh, have a recognition of one of our employees. Uh, each year, our employees, uh, travel to St. Cloud to participate in the, uh, Minnesota American Public Works Association Fall Expo. Um, at that event, uh, they're able to get some training, view new equipment, and we select, uh, a few of our employees, I don't know, three or four each year, to compete in the rodeo down there. Uh, they compete against other counties and cities' employees from around the state, and this year, we're happy, uh, to have one of our employees came in second place out of everyone that, uh, attended that event and participated. And we'd like to, uh, recognize Chris Ayers and have him and Jonah come up. He's got his plaque. He's, would like to show us and, but, uh, I think I heard you talk about it in reports of correspondence. Uh, he is selected then to participate in the, um, the national event in Colorado, um, coming up next summer, I believe it is.
Is that mountain roads that you gotta go down and, that'd be fun? Yeah.
Actually, it's a, you need events out there, so I will be competing with, uh, the guy that's in first place.
Okay.
So, we, we met, uh, when we got to platform, that we met for the first time and they exchanged numbers and stuff, so.
Okay, that'd be great. Let's, hold that up, let us take a look. Um, let's take a pic, you wanna picture, Nate?
Yeah.
Why don't you have Jim and Jonah stand with you and grab a picture of it?
Board can be behind if you want. Like we had anything to do with it?
Nothing. We're just photogenic.
Picture opportunity.
Well, so.
You can stand over here.
All right, on three.
One, two, three.
Get one more. Three. All right.
Congratulations. I thought it would be in the shape of a gel box. As a farm boy, I, I always thought that one, if it was farming, when you dig that hundred-something-inch rare egg and miss that ball. I hit a couple of roads, so.
Well, congratulations and, and hope you, uh, have, hope you do well down in, uh, Colorado. So that'll be a national, national event, huh? A friend of mine, uh, from Lake Park competes in it. He's in, uh, I, I think, I don't know if there's different classes, uh, I think he's just in open, or I don't know if he works for an agency. Um, Steve Johnson, he's been down and been in the top quite a bit, so. I don't know who he, who he drives truck for. Do you know, John, who he drives truck for, but?
No, I, I know in the past, uh, I think Larry Kretbar, I think he was first at one year.
I know Gary Kretzer was as well.
Yeah, so we've had good success.
Oh, good.
LaMofe.
Well, good, I'm glad.
Told the rest of the board I was on that committee for fifteen years or more.
Sure.
Down there, so, very well. I never did the driving, though.
They're trying to rope me in, but I don't, I don't wanna get in.
I didn't wanna beat everybody.
No.
Sure, well, congratulations again, thanks.
Thank you.
All right, ten-twenty-three, so we still have a few minutes, uh, for Steve. Maybe you can get through some, some or most of yours.
Okay. Morning.
Good morning.
Just go down the line here. Uh, we have Electronic Waste Disposal Service Agreement with Dynamic. Uh, it's a disposal service, that's where we bring all our e-waste, and, uh, they charge us for, they have the rates in the, in the contract or in the, in the service proposal, so.
I was just kidding to Richard, saying we could catch up if he made motions fast, but, um, entertain a motion to enter into the agreement?
So move.
Motion by John, second by Richard. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you. Uh, second item is Resolution eleven-twenty-three-one B. It's a solid waste transfer memorandum of understanding between Becker County and Clay County. Uh, this is what predicated us to, or led us to purchase trailers and trucks so we can start hauling our own waste. Instead of contracting that out, the idea is that we'd be back hauling each other's waste. They're, they're bringing garbage from Moorhead to, to.
I think this is a pretty, pretty significant step with, with moving in the direction that we wanna go with, um, Clay County and back, back hauling. This, this has the potential to saving the county's considerable amount of money and, um, and Clay County. Save both counties considerable amount of money, but this is the first step in, in getting down that avenue. Um, we still have to work with the Fargo landfill, um, still have to do a lot of, lot of, lot of things, but this is, um, it's great to see them as excited as we are about, about this cost savings.
Sure, so if, by approving this MOU, this will allow us to work with Clay County. Uh, the next step would be develop a memorandum of understanding with the City of Fargo and, uh, Clay County so that we can start trading waste, which would be another savings. Uh, there was one, uh, ju, uh, correction on the MOU towards the bottom of the third paragraph. They had a run-on sentence that I amended. Uh, do you want the corrected version or just?
Um, we, we acknowledge the corrected version of the sentence.
Okay.
I think Larry Knutson phoned in, phoned that for us.
So, I guess with that, uh, any other questions?
Hope Larry's listening.
Move, uh, Resolution one B. Second.
Motion and second to approve one B. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Third item is the capital purchase request to purchase a forklift. Uh, we purchased forklift and also it has a bale clamp on it. Uh, that's one of the piece of equipment that will help us out at our recycling facility. Basically, what it allows us to do is to more efficiently package, uh, or put bales into trailers so you can get better weights.
We had a, quite a bit of discussion about the clamp, right? So it's not a forklift, technically. It's a, it's a machine that has a fork-like capabilities, but it's a clamp machine instead of the forks. It can clamp either way.
Can rotate and turn the bale from sideways to lengthways to shove it in, so.
Yeah. And I think that, that, part of that machine pops that price up a little bit higher, but maximize, what Steve said in finance, so to maximize loads, especially in lightweight materials, this would be, um, very beneficial. Drive the machine right onto the trailer and, and stack it from front to back and.
So this is based on state contract pricing or pricing comparable with, um, Minnesota state contract pricing? Uh, it's, it's a new machine, uh, and, and as the Commissioner said, the price for adding the clamp adds about eighteen thousand to it, but the total amount from, uh, FM Forklift, uh, is fifty-five thousand five-hundred-and-ninety dollars, and they do have it in stock.
Move to approve.
Sorry, I got. Motion by Richard, second by John. All those, any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Uh, third item is a request, personnel request to hire mechanic. Uh, in finance yesterday, there was some corrections or they told me to check on the actual cost, so I, I checked with HR and thanks to Kerry, we get, the band grade was rechecked. It's actually higher than what we had here. The band grade should be a B-two-four-two, and I'm not sure if you wanna see the job description.
We don't need to see the job description.
So the actual cost for a B-two-four-two, step five, total, the, the base salary is fifty-two thousand nine forty-nine, total cost is seventy-seven thousand six ninety-nine and dollars and fifty cents, and to go to step ten, it's sixty-two thousand five sixty. Total cost is eighty-six thousand eight hundred and thirty-nine dollars. This position would be a mechanic and, uh, also a backup truck driver and, uh, backup lead.
Are you just saying the truck driver can just back up? Or are you saying a truck driver who is?
Well, the, the truck driver position that we authorized.
Instead of backup, yeah.
Yeah.
We need him to drive forward, though. Um, I, I, I think this, I think, oh, you just got that?
No, but sometimes.
That's why they make backup cam.
I move Resolution one A.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Um, I think the need, the need here, though, is because we're moving to this, we're buying, we bought the tractor and trailer and we're gonna be shipping, um, with Clay County in this cooperative, and this is just another part of that. Uh, the mechanic, I, I believe the mechanic's duties are gonna be secondary. I think it's gonna be more of a truck driver position, but, um, I think having someone that can do those light mechanic duties is gonna be essential to.
We, we've been needing somebody to do that for a long time, so.
So, anyway, we have a motion, a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you. Uh, the third item is, uh, two thousand twenty-four solid waste tip fees. Uh, in, in finance, they came up and the board wanted, or the finance committee recommended, uh, holding the increases down to ten percent at the maximum, so I recalculated these and,
So, so with your, your, one in your packet, the consensus was that some of those jumps were a little bit too significant for us, so we wanted to max, max every, any increase the maximum would go up would be ten percent at this year. So, there are some adjustments, but it's only lower on this year's rate. You understand that? So there, most of them were, were under that, but there was a few that jumped quite a bit and thought that that sizable increase in one year was a little bit much. So, that was our recommendation. And they can come back and ask again next year for another increase to get to where those were, but at least take stage it over time rather than.
Yeah, no, there's no such shock in people.
So, with this new schedule, um, entertain a motion?
So move. Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Item F is a letter of support for the City of Perm. They have a major project where they're renovating some of the streets there that go up to the Perm Research Recovery Facility, and, uh, that was in your packet.
I think this, we did this several years ago when they were talking about upgrading a street or something, too, so.
It could have been.
Yeah, that was brought up at their last meeting, so.
It's kinda asking the adjoining businesses, which we are one of the businesses with the re, the incinerator to send a letter of support, so it's very appropriate and.
I move the letter of support for Perm Street Improvements.
Okay, motion by John, second by Richard. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
And the last item is the two thousand twenty-four snowmobile trail improvement grant, accepting the grant from the DNR. It's a pass-through grant.
Okay, and this is with Ultra, and it have a, to do with, I think, a bridge or.
Bridge, uh.
Bridge.
Just a pass through.
So, entertain a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Or to accept. All those, is, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Richard. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Now, perfect timing, we're two minutes behind schedule. Planning and zoning. Catch up.
Good morning. Got Planning Commission recommendations, first from October twenty-fifth for your consideration. Um, the first, uh, conditional use permit to operate a salvage yard by Brad and Leah Snelling. A recommendation was to approve, um, with some hours of operation. Um, I believe that was eight to five-thirty P.M., and then also limiting the size of the yard to ten acres.
And you wish to? Do you just state your name for the, and address for the record and?
I'm Brad Snelling, uh, live in Norfolk City. Uh, so I am the one that wants to start a salvage yard. I did prior to that, I don't keep or anything, or pulling dicks out directly to salvage yards, it's a potato plant, uh, which is no longer there, it's a partnership with my company, and, uh, so I'm just, I wanna start up fresh. Uh, it's close to home. I live two miles from one of the properties I bought, and left the building. Uh, my plan is not to go full-on parts into things, you know, um, and do more, you know, like hauling them in, hanging on to them until, you know, iron prices, et cetera, go up, uh, process and stuff like that that would be done inside the building. Um, as far as the parts into things goes, I mean, if somebody calls me on a part, they're, hey, Brad, I got a flat tire on the side of the road. I wanna be able to sell them apart, you know, underneath the stuff, but me, myself, and I, um, there was, uh, yeah, pretty much, I don't know how much.
No, that's, that's fine. Uh, I thi, I'm, I'm sure there's a, there, we read a couple people opposing it. Um, how, I don't know where they're, how close they are to the facility. Are they adjoining?
So the ones right next door, um, have a Angelic, Angel, Angelic, they're.
The folks that were in person, yes.
Yes.
Or to the south?
Yes.
And then?
They're just to the south. Um, I was kinda shocked. I'm part of that. I mean, when I'm working out there, I mean, a lot of that comes over there. You know, to my face, tell me, great deal, you know, I'll be your security, everything else, and then they come. We're opposed to it. Uh, the other ones that complained are to the north, a couple properties. Um.
So I'm, I'm not familiar with the area, so I'll have to lean on.
I think there's that eighty, eighty acres in between.
No, no, I'm, if, I'm kinda looking for.
No, I'm, I'm very familiar with the roads and, or it's, that's all.
That's in, Erica, your district?
Yep.
Hundred percent, honestly. I have not personally talked to them. I do know them.
Mm-hmm.
When they see me, they wave, they're friendly. Amongst some of them complaints, a few friends of mine and some of the other neighbors around there, I, you know, ask them what they thought, you know, and, and they all felt there has to be something more than, it's not something against me, not something against the yard, you know, there's gotta be something else about it, but I don't.
I have had a couple conversations with, with people out in that area, and I think really it's just, they, that their, their, their concerns are more of the noise. Um, you know, out in the country, noise does travel, um, far.
Yes.
So.
It does. And as far as, I mean, I figured I'd go give them all my phone number. If they got a problem, I'll correct it. I mean, I take pride in everything I do. Um, just me, myself, and I, and that's why I'm not going on full parts into things, because I did that, had, you know, guys and everything else.
The one question.
Doing it 'cause I love buildings, pretty much.
The one question that was brought up to me was, is that township road a ten-ton road? Like, so can you, can semis drive on that road?
During the summer.
Okay.
Unless the township restricts it.
So there's no issue necessarily with, with the road?
No, it didn't sound like when I talked to township.
Wouldn't think you'd need a ten-ten road to run that business.
More of a nine-ten during the summer than a ten, but.
You know, I, I, I think of aesthetically for, for adjoining properties, it would be a, not the most welcome. I can certainly understand that. Um, but I'm gonna, I'll lean on Erica's area, I'm.
Part of, like the ones that directly joined, there was a two thousand fifteen, which, when it printed out, you know, it was commensurate with control. Um, I didn't go into full detail either, you know, when I was at that meeting about it, but I caught a guy, one of my employees, stealing money out of my field, and it caused problems at his home front. His wife was actually the one that called it, and they come in. I had to update a eyewash station and put up, uh, hazardous waste sign. That was the only thing that I got out of it, and it went through everything, it wasn't. As far as that info, I don't know how.
Well, if you're, if you're inspected by the state, they're gonna find something to, to get, tell you to improve, and there's no question about it.
Right, and if I do something wrong, I hope they tell me so I can do the right.
Like our new facility.
Yeah.
No, it's, I mean, it's not like I'm gonna be there every day. It's just when people are calling. I have farm at home, uh, busy night, but I take pride in it. Either do the right thing first.
I make a motion to concur with planning and zoning.
We have a motion?
I do.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion, second. Do you have some?
I do, I do have just a couple of things, just from the conversations I've had with, with the people that have called me, is one, and we discussed this briefly at the Planning Commission of having a fence around, um, where, where the salvage yard will be, just because, you know, to the south, I think they do have children, and that was what was mentioned, that maybe having a fence, um.
What, to the south?
It is to the south, right?
Well, I mean, the only one I think, I, well, they're to the south, they have two kids.
Yep.
They're driving and going around on my property all the time.
Mm-hmm.
When I'm working out there, well, so I had a survey, and I had, I wasn't gonna have a survey, but I had a survey, just, and I told them, my H-trail is put a stake, 'cause I don't wanna be that guy to say, get off the property.
Mm-hmm.
I had to put a stake in my H-trail, thinking maybe they kinda get the point to quit driving on there, but that didn't change. Now, two days after the twenty-fifth.
Mm-hmm.
When they surveyed, I had to survey stakes, the ribbons from, uh, company on the Great Lakes here that surveyed. I drive by, somebody pulled my ribbon, and said, like, what the heck, you know?
Yeah, and that's, I mean, I, that's unfortunately, and it's, it sounds like you might have a, an issue with concerns with a neighbor or someone coming in there, but I think the concern is, um, should, should this board require any, any type of fencing on that property line?
Around the, what the salvage yard would be.
I've done a lot. I would like, so me and the wife decided, you know, if I could put, uh, I just said, along the woodside, I have no height requirement for it, but then like the back end, I think I'll just run a hardwire fence on the fence line, you know.
Cause the back end is your property, there's, not visible from.
Long distance of my property from where I'm op, gonna operate, through the property line, I mean, it, I left a nice border of trees and, you know, thinking all the trees would hide everything. Well, it's where you wouldn't see anything from the road besides once I get a building up and, you know, have a nice, uh, not that all the leaves fell. If you're looking for it, you can see through, through the trees, you know. Uh, as far as privacy fence along, you know, on the inside, inside of the trees is what I would like because I like to look for the trees in that better than a high-skill fence, you know.
Yep.
But I'd probably put something on the inside.
Mm-hmm.
It would be about, uh, you know, eight foot, ten foot on the inside.
Ten foot's awful hot, aye.
Yeah, I mean, the only person that's gonna see it all the month till leaves fall is me.
Mm-hmm.
You know, you're not gonna see it from the road.
I think inside the trees would be fine.
The one complaint that someone had, they said they drove, the wording was yesterday, down the township road, and I could see a loader and a vehicle. I had many people drive by. I told them, it is a payloader, and there is a vehicle. I had several people drive by and tell me, what kind of equipment is it right here? All you can see is the top yellow cap. You can't tell if it's a loader, you can't tell if it's a dozer, you can't tell it, anyway, you just see yellow.
Mm-hmm.
So how he knew it was a loader from the township road at the time. But, regardless.
And just a couple other things that I just, that I would bring up is their, um, their question is about, I think we have the time shortened to eight to five-thirty. Their concerns are Saturday and Sunday having, um, the machinery running.
Right. I, I have no intention. Uh, the reason I had, well, there's a lot of people, you know, out of town. All of a sudden, somebody calls me, hey, I, from, you know, St. Cloud, broke down my car.
Mm-hmm.
What would you give me for it, et cetera? Come get it, sitting on the side of the road.
Mm-hmm.
On the weekend, drive in, grab my truck, go pick it up.
I think the, I think the business hours are there for, and you don't plan on having this open to the public anyway, so I mean, but I don't, I don't know that we can, I don't know that it appropriate that we say you can't be on your property. I mean, those are, those are business hours for public, so.
More emergency situation where you go out and have to pick something up.
Right.
I'm just, I'm just saying the business hours are for walk-in traffic. They don't, you don't wanna, so.
And I'm not, I'm not being open to public, but if, if somebody calls me, you know, with a flat tire, and I got one sitting there, I don't wanna have, don't tell them, you know.
But that's different than walk-in traffic on a schedule, so, you know, I, in my opinion, when you have hours, that's for walk-in traffic. I mean, if, if there's, obviously, if there, there is a lot of extenuating circumstances, and I don't.
If I sold a part or, you know, a tire or, you'd have to be like a point, you know, I'm not gonna be there.
Yep.
Eight to five-thirty.
Yep.
I'll be in and out.
Right, but. Right, but that, that's kind of what they want your schedule. If you're going to schedule appointments, then that's, that's the times when you should try to schedule. Or if you, or if you have something you, you know, nobody's going to be out, I mean. I don't see your business plan being a, a high traffic. So I don't think that's the concern.
And I think, I think the concern isn't necessarily with the traffic as much as machinery. Hearing the machinery.
You got a muffler on your loader, right?
No. Part of that, the neighbors to the south that were here and talked. The day I brought my loader over there, he drives over there. And. My muffler on my loader was perfectly fine. I bought a brand new one. And I was installing it, putting on, the day he drove over there, and then they complained about noise, but it's like. I put a brand new muffler on the day I brought the loader to the property. Just to, so I tried to not have.
Well, I, I think where we, where we're at, we have a motion and a second. Erica, is there, is there any stipulations which you would like to add to the, the planning and zoning?
Just the fence and.
The fence is already included, but you're.
The fence was not included.
I thought.
No fence. There's screening requirements by ordinance, which.
Okay.
That would be like vegetation, but we did, we talked about a fence, but it didn't get into motion.
Okay, did you?
The only other thing, just again, what was brought up, conversations for me, but this was also addressed at the planning commission, that you would not be crushing vehicles onsite?
No.
So that was one of their concerns, that, that was what they thought it would be, so.
Okay, so add in your motion, no crushing?
No crushing, onsite.
But how do you get, how do you get them out of there if they're full sized?
So, I've dealt with. CW metal, growing, a bunch of different ones. They have new chopper bins.
Okay.
At our other location. I mean, they drive in, they pick them up whole, they put them in the trailers. They can fit like eight, and, well, depends what it is. In their trailers that are all enclosed. And they haul them up whole. Then they, they do all the, you know, oil and all that stuff that they're.
Because I know like RotoWalls, they crush out there, but it's like once a, a year or once every two years. It's not very often.
Once every ten years, I think.
Yeah, maybe, maybe. And so I didn't want, I wouldn't want to see that you couldn't do it, but maybe they're going away from crushing onsite.
A lot are. Now, some, there is a lot of companies that are still crushing, you know, and.
Yeah, that doesn't take very long, does it? How long does it take to crush out?
I shipped out a hundred ninety-two semi loads in thirty-two days at our other location.
Thirty-two days, a lot of crushing.
That was when we shut down.
Okay.
Shop, a thousand cars, and. Most of the time, like if I had, say, three, four hundred cars. You, I mean, if you wanted to ask them, or the way we set them up and the way I did in the past. They love coming to our place because everything is ready to go. They get there, five minutes later, they're going to work, making happen. Three hundred cars, four hundred cars, I would say three quarters.
That's why I'd hate to, if, if it got to where he's got a buyer that wants to do that, I'd, I'd hate to see that.
Some, like. Back when I was shipping to Canada, them ones, they all crushed. While the Canadian markets, a lot, they've been a lot higher than the US market.
Okay, to get through this process, I got to ask a question. Can we put the restriction on that there's no crushing unless he comes back to the board and gets a, gets a two-day permit for that? Without going through planning and zoning?
There's precedence, WeFest has that.
You know, so what I'm saying is if, if we don't allow it unless you come back to this board at a published meeting that, in, in two years or, you know, and say, you know, I just need to crush for two days. And I'll, I'll be out. I mean, so that gives some, some. Do you think we have that authority just to?
I, I've seen it in the WeFest permit that, that you review it annually and are able to amend it, so.
Okay.
And that's never been challenged, and I mean, something of this nature, if it were challenged.
So, so we won't allow it unless we amend it, and you'd have to come back and, is that something it's doable?
And that's a, all.
Yep, it runs, so a lot, like when we shipped Canada, I mean, they were there early and that, so if it, if it would have to stay under that eight to five thirty.
Well, you could, you could modify the hours and the request, because it would amend it.
What it would be is just the stipulation would be that. The crushing has, the crushing time and timeline has to be approved by this board.
I mean, if, if it went to like eight to five thirty, I would say four or five days. But.
Right, so what, essentially what you would do is you'd come in here and they'd say, well, how many cars you got? And you'd say, well, I got two fifty. Well, how, how many hours do you think that's going to take you to do? And then maybe they could be like, well, we don't want you to crush them the first week of July, because that's July fourth, and go one week beyond that and. Go eight to eight, just to get out of there or something. Or maybe they'll say less.
But that would, I mean, I'm just asking if we could ask you to come back if you have crushing, and then it would, that would alleviate some of the concerns of the.
Could be once to five years. I mean.
Yeah.
Yes.
So.
As long as it's, you know, not, I mean, simple, yeah.
Stipulation, any crushing would have to come back to the board for approval?
How to word that?
Just a crushing, I would just say a crushing plan would have to be submitted and approved by this board.
And, on a. I don't want to say annual, because if you're not going to do it, but.
As needed.
As, as need, and amendment as needed, amendment to the plan as needed.
So I don't have my own crusher by. A portable crusher, so maybe a portable crusher comes in.
Yeah.
Yep.
But then you'd have to come back and, and, I mean, you'd want to plan ahead, because this would take a couple weeks to get on the agenda and approved, but. At least that would give the people knowing that they have some knowledge. That's not going to be a, a practice that's going to be an ongoing.
Right. And lots, so prior before, I always hired out all the trucks coming in and out. And, you know, so you got a lot of wages that are, you know, going to your trucks, going to wages, you know, you're, you know. Including myself, you know, my plan is to, I want to haul. You know, one load every couple weeks or something myself. And just, you know, keep it flowable, you know, so.
Well, this gives you the option to crush if you, if you need to in the future, or if you.
That would be good.
So, anything else?
Nope.
Ready? And that, is that okay with the motion maker and second to add that stipulation in, that wordage?
I just wanted to make something just simply clear. Just, I don't want it to be the word amend, because then you potentially amending it.
Okay.
Just. Crushing, I mean, we, I can send you five different ways. I just don't like that word.
Okay, how would, what was the wordage that you would?
Well, I think what you had said, that they would, he would submit.
Annual.
Crushing plan.
A crushing plan.
To crush, you'd have to have an annual crushing plan approved by the board?
Yes.
Perfect.
And you don't have to be, you don't have to make it annual, but if you want to crush, then you will need that plan for that next year or so.
Okay.
Is that good?
Whole.
Pardon me? Yeah, this is just crushing.
Yep, crushing onsite.
Okay, any other questions? We have the motion and the second, and we have an informal amendment that that language added, so we don't need any motion. So all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Thank you, thank you for the dialogue and. And I think, just. Go ahead.
When I decide to, you know, fence, put like a privacy fence, I, soon I'll have to come get a permit, or do I do it, or?
You can come and get one.
If you're gonna, yeah, I suppose fencing would be required to.
It's real simple.
It's just a site permit and pretty reasonable price, or, yeah.
Yep.
Or we could authorize any fencing.
If you want, you could. I mean, we stipulated, I guess it has to be done, so.
That would make sense. We would authorize it, so you wouldn't have to get a permit.
The only thing I was going to, going to tell you, like, when, if you put the fencing on the property line, it's limited to six feet in height. If you come off the property line, it's within the setback lines, then you can go to ten.
So like.
So neither one is going to be, you're going to fence the north and the south side. And the backside was going to be just.
Well, the south side.
Is it, let's be, I don't really care to get into your dialogue on your fence size, but is it, is the board willing to add to that motion and. The stipulation that the applicant can put in the appropriate fence if.
I thought we had it in there, but.
Mm-hmm.
Go ahead. I'm fine with it.
I think board.
Then he doesn't need a permit.
The south side shouldn't have to have it.
No, this is your, this is your option, so this is completely up to you and, and converse with Kyle on, on the requirements of any size fence or what the setbacks would be, so. All right. Okay, next item. You're good. We're done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next applicant, Derek Haug, requests a conditional use permit to operate a firearms business. Essentially, this is all online sales. We got a call from the ATF just request, or wondering if we would have any of these requirements. There was one precedent set with. Gordy Anderson got one of these a handful of years ago over by Floyd Lake. It's the only one, other one I'm aware of. Erica did mention there is a gentleman in the city of Fraser. Kind of operates something similar, but. Is, they're more.
I know a couple guys that have a license by himself.
There used to be one out by Floyd Lake. I don't know if he's still at work doing it or not.
Gordy's guns and debris.
Gordy's guns and debris, yeah.
Yeah, he's my FFL.
I got.
Move to concur.
Second.
Motion second, any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
The last application. Where'd it go? MGM LLC, requesting a conditional use permit to operate a plumbing, heating, ventilation and air conditioning business. Recommendation to approve, this was Greens Plumbing, moving from Highway fifty-nine north to County six and fifty-nine south.
Move to concur.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. I tell you.
They did a lot of work.
I have a little, I have a little bit of an issue with, with the building being built before you get your approval. Whether it's, whoever it is, I, I have.
Kind of mentioned that.
I take some, I take some. I take some offense to that.
Well, and he was under heavy fire the whole time, the PCA Pelican River watershed, and I, I had heard in the beginning, he wasn't moving his business there. That he was going to try and do some type of shop condos, and that's why they're.
I don't care what he does. I don't care where he does it. I'm, I'm saying, you put that much money in a building before you have a, a authorization to use it? What date did the, the permit, what date did the site permit application come, come in?
I'd have to go back and look. I don't have it at my fingertips.
But you know what I'm getting.
Oh, I get what, yeah, it was before.
There was plenty of time to apply for this prior to starting construction.
Well, when the original excavator called me last spring, he asked me if he could remove some trees from the property, and I said, yeah, that's fine. And a week later, there was like ten thousand yards moved. It's not what.
I'm not saying we shouldn't approve this, because I, I think if there's nobody opposing it, it's appropriate, but this is a precedent that is very dangerous for a business, you, and I, and I. For them to say, well, we got all this money investment, that's, that's their problem. This does not pass today. That's their problem. It's not, it's not for us to consider where they're going to lose money. I'm not saying this isn't appropriate in this case, but this is, I don't like this at all.
Yeah, well, it's not wise.
I like the business moving from Detroit Township to Lakeview.
Well, I, I don't have any problem, but that permit has to. I, I, that's not good.
Commercial's last egg.
It's next to a church, school.
And they're fine with it.
I know. What happens if they're not? If they're not, this gets denied.
Well, and it was, I mean, we were getting constant calls on it, and I was under the assumption he was not moving his business there. I mean, seriously, there was employees complaining about it, because they thought they were getting this nice new building, and then. He had different plans, and then I don't know if them failed, so now then he did come back, but yeah, it was a dangerous game he played.
Well. I, I hope, I hope, I hope this passes, but I hope it's not unanimous, because this is not a, this is not good practice. So.
Trying to sway your votes.
I said, I, I'm not, I'm fine, I, I think, I think it should be passed, because it's in a, it's a good business, it's a good community business, it's been a good business for our community. But that is not how you do business. And that's, I'm disappointed that they would do that, but.
I do think he, and, and, because when he came to the meeting that day, he asked me if it was. He was puzzled while he was even there, because it's owned commercial. My understanding is, is this, this, this parcel was a part of a larger parcel across the street. And that was zoned, commercial.
If it's zoned commercial, then he does have the right.
But it was stipulated on where that was, and it was, it was kind of like strip. Remember that discussion? It was Long fifty-nine.
I remember it was the, it was billboard issue at that time, and I also remember the, the, was, the building across the road up on fifty-nine. Was, the, the edge on the east, west side is not, is not part of the commercial use either.
Right, and, and I would be able to defend that by precedence, because we, we didn't allow a, a previous business to come as a permissible use. We got a conditional use, and that was Muttley's. In the same spot. It never got built, but they came and applied, and, and that was our interpretation, that. We, all these parcels were combined, being divided by roads, and this planning, or this county board years ago. Separated out a small piece of commercial out of like eighty acres. Not even in the vicinity of this property, but on line, that's what it says. It, it needs to be fixed. And I'm not just taking it for him, but.
There's a, there's a thin, thin line of.
Well, he was just, he could.
Misreading, yeah.
He was asking me at the meeting, and I was like, no, that doesn't lie.
I think we've.
Yeah, we got just to the west, the other side, that Daniels place, that's all commercial.
Right.
Going to the north. You get through the west, west of Monson, and on the north side, west side of Long Lake Road, it's commercial.
Directly across the street is not commercial. Isn't that, isn't that that new log home?
No, no, this, this is further west.
Regardless, we're at where we're at.
There's a lot of spot commercial off, off six there.
Oh, yes, there is a lot of commercial. I'm not arguing that, but if, if we would have had strong resistance, there would be a pretty good chance this wouldn't go through. And from the church as a school, church as a commercial business right next door, it would be significant challenge for us to move forward.
Well, I don't have to say it off the record, because he told us that he was the biggest donor to the church, so I.
But, you know.
And I don't know when that donation came, if that was annually or.
Okay, I think, I think we've stressed our disappointment in the timing of this well enough, so.
Right.
I believe he was going to put a fence up too.
Well, he said yes, because he fenced his last business.
Yeah.
Is that, does he have to come back for a permit to get that fence? I would check that. Anyway, did we?
We haven't brought it yet.
We have an act, we have, we don't have a motion, do we?
Yeah.
Yep.
Do we have a motion?
Motion, second.
Yep. Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carries.
The last thing I have for you is just a compliance update. Most of you were at that last meeting we had. We'll have, be having another one on the fourteenth. Two gals part of that meeting, Robin and Maura, are just working on a vision and mission statement to bring back to you the fourteenth. Just going to keep trying to get some public engagement. It has been sent out to the cities and the tribe, so hopefully they'll partake. I don't know if you guys have any feedback from that meeting. We, I think we really got to talk at the end, but.
No, I thought, I, I thought they were, I thought they were pretty professional and.
No, they have been in both of the previous meetings too. I'm just going to get my chat thing to work.
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, they couldn't hear.
I could hear the whole time, and, and I couldn't respond, because I switched from, I don't know, I'm on my, I was on my phone in the shop, and. I don't know if it, it transferred over, it, it goofy, but I could hear you guys the whole time, and then Pat sent me the link, and then I linked up again, so.
I don't know if it's, anybody be operator here, I don't know.
I, I, yeah. It was a good first meeting. I, I would like those meetings in person rather than. Maybe we should, even if they're on Zoom, we'd be maybe.
Oh, yeah, sure, we could always do that. I'd like to do that.
Would you rather have us all, I mean, option, I mean, if, if you're, I mean, if you're working somewhere outside, but I, I would, I'd like, kind of that we all.
I think it's better to have done the dialogue.
We all wanted to sit with Richard and.
Well, you didn't get here all my.
Oh, we heard, we heard. You weren't muted as often as you thought you were.
They have a local rep too that could, you know, be here.
I think it's fine with them on Zoom. I think it would just, it's.
Yeah.
Nice.
I have to do that.
Is that, is that going to be fourteenth in the morning, probably?
Should be the same time. I don't think.
Is the fourteenth with everybody or just John and I?
I didn't hear about the fourteenth. I thought the.
It's just you, it's just you two, isn't it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, and the Pat, previously though, there was a discussion where we wanted all these posted, wasn't there, recommendation?
Well, post them all when all.
I think just notify everyone.
For sure, but when the two are there.
Then we, right, there's no forum, but I mean. Do you want to be at the, does five want to be at the next, or we do them quarter year?
I thought that was just the two commissioners that are on.
I think you put it out there that anyone can go and post it, and then we'll have the two, most likely it's just going to be the two.
That was my understanding before, we were posting all of them in case someone showed up.
That's fine, because that works for me.
So the, like, the public shows up, you mean?
No, more than a quorum of.
Oh, gotcha.
They could show up.
I don't know.
Why don't you go down there?
Well, I'll tell you. I'm in the midst of, you know. Trying to accomplish some things before everything. trying to accomplish some things before everything freezes, and I'm not doing very good. I'm not just a farmer, I can't just drive.
Um, anything else? All right, uh, we are adjourned then. Thank you for those online.